I'm going to give a one minute, one minute warning and we'll get the meeting started. Order the meeting if staff is ready to go. Great. I'd like to call to order the regular planning commission meeting for Wednesday, April 19th. The time is 6:03 and if we could have a call to order. I'm sorry, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. I just called this to order. Mr. Landris, will you help me with the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. And then if we could have a roll call, please.
All right. Good evening, Commissioner. I'm taking role Commissioner Fonda Bonardi.
Here.
Commissioner Fresco.
Here.
Commissioner Lambert.
Here.
Commissioner Landris.
Here.
Vice Chair Raskin.
Here.
Commissioner Tulcan.
Here.
Chairperson Reese.
Here.
And moving along in our agenda, the next item is number four, Planning Director's Report. If we could get a Planning Director's Report.
Yeah, I'll just do a brief one. David, David Martin will be here a little bit later in the evening. Since we just met last week, some of these items remain on the slide that we do for information updates. Just wanted to highlight, I won't go over what's on the agenda for May 7th, 17th. You saw that last, last week. We are not having a meeting on May 3rd. Just wanted to note, I don't have a date scheduled yet for this, but we do anticipate and plan to bring forward a discussion, study session item for you all to hear about the city planning division's work program and potential priorities. And I intend to include, I intend to include with that item the list that I have been keeping and I will go back and through our records and make sure I can capture this commission's direction and recommendations on discussion and study session items, just so that we have it, you know, consolidated in one place. How that fits into the priorities, you know, that's something that the department, David, in consultation even with our city manager, will be going over as we're looking at staffing. The ultimate goal for this discussion is to go ahead and do a similar presentation to council to go over our department's priorities. City planning's work is, you know, a big component of that. We anticipate doing that later in the summer. And then in terms of upcoming, coming items at city council, we already reviewed that last week. Nothing has changed on the schedule. Thank you.
We have one question for you, at least.
Yeah, the, thank you, Roxanne. The, on that future item, I believe when we receive the latest resolution from the council on boards and commissions, all commissions are obliged to have a work plan, which is a little weird for us because, you know, we go according to the, to, on the quasi judicial. But to the extent that that agenda item could be, could satisfy the, the, the rules that we have a work plan discussion, that could be really helpful both for us and for you potentially.
Okay.
If that's just a thought to kind of put those pieces together.
That's a good suggestion. We'll work on that. Certainly the subset of the, of the presentation around this commission's list of discussion and study session items would likely kick off that requirement as well.
Any other questions? Okay. Let's see, next. So a little bureaucratic announcement, you know, we have requests for speaks, to speak. There are chits in the back who fill them out and bring them up to the front. And that's how we will call people up in, in order. Commissioners, do you have any announcements? Seen none. We're going to move on. This is public input on items not on our agenda today. So if anybody has something they want to bring up that is not on the agenda, this would be the appropriate time. Not seeing anybody, we're going to move on to eight, which is consent calendar items, or seven, I'm sorry, consent calendar. We don't have anything on the consent calendar. And we'll move on to eight. And I'd like to do a little bit of agenda management here. I would like to entertain, I would like to get a second to move eight B, the planning, planning department or commission priorities to the end of our agenda so that we can hear the liberal communities presentation and then go on to our public hearings. So seconded.
All right. Commissioner Fonda Bonardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco? Yes. Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Vice Chair Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulcan?
Yes.
Chair Reese?
Yes. Okay, with that, we are at eight B and the presentation from liberal communities. Okay, for the record, I'm going to, I was correct, that's eight A. We moved eight B.
I can see it. Thank you.
Was this the one we thought that didn't have her?
Okay.
Sorry, let me help you. I'll just introduce myself in the meantime. My name is Jenny Hance. I am the Chief of Staff of the Living Bull Communities Initiative and I'm here with Ed Mendoza, our policy director, who is a former city planner in the city of LA and Culver City. So he brings, he's going to be the one to answer most of your questions, but I'm going to present the general idea of what the LCI is. And essentially, we are, we are grassroots group of citizens across LA County who are working on solutions to both the housing and the climate crisis holistically. And the basic idea, we are actually a program in the LA Housing Element and the Culver City Housing Element and Santa Monica City Council just voted last month, I believe it was, was it last month, to study the LCI. So Leslie invited us to come speak today, really appreciate it. I've met with her and I've met with a lot of neighborhood groups like OPA. We were invited by city council members and residents to talk about the LCI in Santa Monica in response to some of the concerns that neighborhood groups expressed about the upzoning of neighborhood commercial in the housing element and concerns about preserving fine grain retail. That's why people reached out to us, but really, we're not here to dictate anything about where this might go in the city. Others have suggested it might be great downtown, you know, for Third Street Promenade. I think it's up to the city to decide, but we're just here to share our idea and our resources and our research with you. And you can ask questions and hopefully Ed can answer most of them if they're deep in the planning world. But the basic idea of the LCI is to create this concept of the 15-minute community, which you may have heard. It's made national news lately, unfortunately, because some right-wing people have conspiracy theories about this concept. But the basic concept is essentially you live in a neighborhood that's walkable, bikeable, near transit, and that has all the amenities you need on a daily or weekly basis. You're near job centers, you're near restaurants, coffee shops, grocery stores, so that you can get most of your basic needs met on a daily or weekly basis without having to get in a car. Santa Monica is already sort of well on the way toward this concept, way ahead of most people in the region. You have bike lanes, you know, we envision even safer versions of bikeways, but you have transit, you have these incredible walkable streets. Many of these neighborhood commercial streets are just the epitome of walkable, what we call sticky streets where, you know, you really can't, you want to hang out on these streets. They're pedestrian friendly, they're places where people want to go and hang out. And our basic concept is, can we add a couple stories of housing above neighborhood retail and preserve the fine-grain retail at the same time? Is that possible? To have sort of mixed-use housing, but not these giant block-long developments that rip up an entire block and replace small local businesses with chain stores, but instead, the concept is a parcel-by-parcel approach, almost applying the ADU model to small commercial properties so that they can add housing, a couple stories above their shop, but maintain the same retail footprint. And as we know, rents for those retail spaces are generally based on square footage. So if you retain the retail footprint and couple that potentially, if the city wants to explore it, with tenant protections for those small local businesses, the idea is to really preserve them. And, you know, we have explored this across LA and in sensitive areas like South LA, explored the idea of funds like the metro funds that were used to help businesses during construction of the K-line. So it's exploring sources of funding that could help those small businesses during construction, keep the retail footprint the same, add a little bit of housing. And, you know, and the idea is to really create a plan that neighbors can get to a yes behind. And a lot of what we've done is really organize, organize and hold Zooms with neighborhood groups to develop support. I'm not sure if I'm doing this correctly, so I may need help. You can help. Why don't you help with that part? Thank you. Great. So essentially, we're, but it's not showing up there. The slides are not showing. I don't know. They're not advancing. We are, we are essentially a group that started with a progressive organization called Hodge, Hang Out Do Good, which is 3,000 activists across the city. And we've organized both homeowners and renters, and we've brought together climate activists, mobility activists, and housing activists to really develop this concept of really pairing the housing with micro-mobility options to transit so that you can feasibly live a car-like or even car-free life in LA, which, you know, many people think is unimaginable. But actually, Santa Monica is ahead of the rest of the region and up to a quarter of your residents already live car-free in Santa Monica. And I know that my mom is 77, no longer feels safe driving in LA. Many of our seniors don't, and they are forced to move into retirement communities. And this is a way to help people age in place in the city, maybe downsize to an apartment from a single-family home, but be able to stay in a vibrant, walkable neighborhood and get their needs met without having to drive. We also find that a lot of young people are delaying getting driver's licenses. You know, my son is a teenager. He's not quite there yet, but a lot of the kids who are teens are not getting driver's licenses. They're waiting later and later into their twenties and they're adopting, you know, whether it's Uber or Lyft. And of course, now we have Turo, which is Airbnb of cars. There's car sharing, so if you need a car, you can get one anytime you want. There's a lot of ways that you can live car-like now that didn't exist 10 or 15 years ago. And a lot of young people, for climate reasons, really want to live car-like. So part of what we've done is really hold a lot of Zooms across LA County with homeowners and people who typically fight housing, and I know you face a lot of that here in Santa Monica, like we, well, I live on the West Side in Los Angeles and a lot of our core group is in Hancock Park and in Westwood and in neighborhoods where this is also an issue. So part of what we've done is really explain this, the role of the state. And, you know, the new housing requirements and how there's teeth behind them, and you all in Santa Monica are well aware of what those teeth are with the builder's remedy. So, you know, really what we emphasize to residents is if you want to retain some local control, you have to get to a yes behind some housing. We can't fight everything. And you can't fight it in your neighborhood and say, put it over there anymore. That's not allowed. Every neighborhood is going to have to step up and add its fair share. So we really explain what that is, but then do deep listening to what, what is it that residents are really fighting? What is it that they're opposing? And we've heard some common themes across the region. A lot of it has to do with aesthetics and neighborhood character, not to cast dispersions, but the building on the left is sort of a famous building with podium parking. And a lot of people feel like it rips up the fabric of the street. It creates kind of a dead zone on the street. And neighbors tend to fight buildings like this. If you followed what was happening in Venice with the monster on the median and, you know, it was a Texas Donut-style podium parking kind of building that really generated huge opposition. And the other thing is, of course, height. Next to single-family homes, people are concerned about privacy and shade. And then the final one, the big, one of the biggest ones is traffic, traffic and parking. They're really concerned that if there's 400 units down, new units down the block, what is that going to do to congestion? My whole life is going to change. So these are, these are some of the main things we hear. And because of that, we developed a plan that addressed community concerns. We tried to take all community concerns very seriously. And, you know, our basic concept is this idea of three to five stories on a walkable street with beautiful architecture near transit so people can live car-like, so that we can really mitigate the traffic impacts of all of the new housing that the state is requiring cities to add. And to try to make it as car-like as possible by having buildings without parking. And again, not ripping up entire blocks, really preserving fine-grain retail. It's a key part of this 15-minute community is having that fine-grain retail and creating this concept of a 15-minute city. So that's why we go with this parcel-by-parcel approach, which really hasn't been feasible up until now. There's been a lot of state laws that are making it more feasible, and we're also pursuing other state laws that would make it even more feasible right now. And of course, lifting parking minimums with 2097, which we advocated for, is also a critical part because really, these buildings will not pencil out if you require parking. And often, some of the parcels are too narrow to even add parking. It's just not feasible to have this kind of mixed-use housing and to have a bunch of underground parking for it. So it really is a different way of developing than we have done in the past, at least in most of the region. And the idea is to take commercial streets like this, this is Westwood Boulevard, but there's plenty of these all over the region, and add a couple stories of housing and add the micro-mobility options, have the alfresco dining and the vibrant street scene. And then, of course, preserving the fine-grain retail with our parcel-by-parcel, small parcel approach that really has not been feasible and still is not entirely feasible until we make some additional changes. And part of what we've done is really look at what those changes are. Main Street is a, is an example of a street that has those single-story commercial buildings that, you know, you could potentially go up two, three, four stories and, you know, preserve that fine-grain retail. We don't want to see those businesses go away, but it could, you know, again, this is a kind of development we saw a lot in pre-car America. And we still see it all over Europe, for instance, Barcelona, Paris, and then a lot of cities, you know, New York's Greenwich Village. I mean, it's not an unfamiliar style of development. And in fact, this is a building on Main Street that currently exists, that's pre-car. So in some ways, it's going back to that earlier style of development, but updating with standards that include courtyards and really additional livability than what we see right now, more open space, modern building standards and better fire safety. Again, I just want to emphasize the, the no parking piece because this is a lot in Culver City. We wanted to, you know, figure out the feasibility. This was a lot for sale for 1.2 million and we, you know, it's too narrow. You could not literally add parking. There's not enough space to turn a car around. So what this model, our model envisions is not needing lot assembly. Because right now, in order to develop, you have to sell or assemble lots, and that drives up the cost of land 40%. And land in Santa Monica is obviously far too expensive already. So really, what we're envisioning is that a small commercial property and or could develop their property without having to sell. And they could do a ground lease or a joint venture with a developer to help minimize the risk of developing a property that's already paid off and generating income. And we've worked with a few developers who are interested in doing this model, and we're talking to commercial property owners about how they can realize more value out of their land ultimately. And, you know, so they have an incentive to do it and be a part of our housing solution. And the idea is to democratize development and really spread it beyond the typical deep-pocketed developers who can, who do everything today. And, you know, part of our idea is, slow down, is to create kind of a turnkey option to help make it really easy for people who haven't been developers before, to come to them with, you know, architectural plans and pre-approved facades and financing and basically, you know, what my colleague calls the bar mitzvah book, like, here's how you do it. So we're working on, you know, pro formas and figuring out how to make it work. And then we want to kind of share that with people who might not typically ever think about building housing, but in this new environment with all the new state laws could. And again, this is Barcelona. And I, you know, I bring this up to just make the point that some of our changes include building code changes and, but they're not changes that are radical in any way. They're changes that are legal pretty much in every city around the world. And except here. In Seattle, there's something called vertical shared access reform. It is legal up to three stories in California. National standards allow higher buildings. Seattle allows six stories with vertical shared access. And Ed is going to go into a lot more detail about that. We've got a state bill, AB 835, that on Monday unanimously passed the Emergency Management Committee of the State Assembly. Ed was in Sacramento testifying. We've got a huge coalition of housing groups behind this bill, including the organization that represents all the affordable housing developers in San Diego. And it essentially would really help make the small parcel developments much more feasible by maximizing living space and eliminating unnecessary hallway space for narrow partials and upgrading fire safety standards with a, with a, a different means of egress other than a second stairway that takes up the living space. And we can replace a lot of that hallway space with open space, green space, courtyards and light wells. So again, we had an architect design a building on that small lot in, in Culver City. And we've got other pro formas looking at properties throughout the county. And, you know, we want to make sure that it pencils out. That's, that's our North Star. So Ed went through the code and figured out the code in Santa Monica, in LA, in Culver City, and all this Burbank. We're working with multiple cities to figure out exactly what would need to change to make these, the style of development legal. And it's, again, it's not reinventing the wheel, but it does require some changes at the local level or the state level that Ed can go into in more detail.
All right. Hi, everyone. So right in front of you, you have a layout for a 50 by 150 lot. So Los Angeles, I should have brought the counter example, but Los Angeles, usually when developers build on these type of lots, the amount of, of light and open space is very limited by the type of circulation that these buildings usually have. Usually either double or single-loaded corridor setups, which sometimes leaves, you know, units having, you know, one window facing, you know, three feet away from another property line, and that adjacent property line may have a building that has no windows. So if you're on the second floor of a building, you're, you're out of luck and you're out of light. The reforms that we're considering completely change how we look at buildings whilst retaining the same, equal amounts of floor, floor plate space, more efficient layouts. And with this efficiency, we could substantially increase the amount of light and open space in, 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 in building layouts. So, so I'm going to be speaking a little bit about vertical shared access reform, which is our, one of our primary reforms that we're advocating for in many cities. So vertical shared access refers to a building design where there is a vertical central structure typically consisting of an elevator and a stairwell that provides access to individual units in a building. Vertical shared access layouts are highly efficient, safe, and are the primary way of building multifamily units in the world. Most social housing in the world is built this way, and a lot of regions in the United States built this way. So I think the East Coast and Seattle and Pacific Northwest. So characteristics of vertical shared access include more housing and efficient layouts, like I mentioned. Parcel size or regular parcel sizes are not a limiting factor. It's easier to have a diverse set of unit and bedroom layouts. So a lot of new construction that we built today are either studios or one beds. And a lot of that is strangely tied to code and how layouts are function within, within limited spaces. This gets rid of that limitation and allows for more, I guess, affordable layouts, two beds, one baths. They're better with ADA access. Travel distances to get in and out of your unit in, in elevator are shorter. And in case of fire, you're, you know, you're in and out almost immediately. It also allows elevators to become more cost-efficient on smaller sites because you're able to fit in more units within smaller sites. So the cost benefit works out. And they're easier to build because building constraints are lessened. Architects get greater freedom in designing innovative and sustainable buildings. Okay, so this is the circulation layout. That's a diagram of it with stairs and elevator forming a core in the middle whilst units surround that core. Notice that there are almost no corridors and it's more of a landing setup, and you don't really share this core with multiple units. Usually at most, by law, the most amount of units that could share cores is four units. So the, I guess, also for social purposes, you've got to meet your neighbors, though. Again, so on the left is a single-loaded, a gallery-access-loaded corridor layout. These are common motels and mid-century buildings. They're typically the most inefficient use in rentable space. However, this layout tends to be the most common on smaller sites. In the middle, we have a double-loaded corridor setup. These are most common North American development. They're largely efficient with space utilization. However, they usually require the most space to be built. You know, having a large site is all but mandatory. And, and yeah. I think Jenny mentioned land assembly. It's really expensive, especially in a higher rent, I mean, higher land cost areas. So vertical shared access is generally much more efficient. You get some amount of density and, and it's, and it's safe. You get some amount of density, and it's safe. This is a diagram showing the double-loaded setup. These are buildings you find all over the United States and see built here. There's a reason why they're usually large and bulky. It's because of building code. This is a courtyard building. It's a traditional archetype for Southern California. These were built all the time in the 1910s, 1920s. They fell out of fashion, and we're trying to reintroduce them. Vertical shared access excels in these type of parcels, 25-foot width parcels or lots on commercial thoroughfares. Like Jenny said, it's incredibly difficult to fit a considerable amount of units besides large entire floor plate lot-style units, but you don't really get affordability out of that. With vertical shared access, you could have a large considerable amount of commercial space on the bottom floor. You could have an internal courtyard and light well, and you could fit in a considerable amount of units, given the limitations of the parcel size. These are some safety standards that are present in Seattle. So in the U.S., the NFPA, which is Fire, Life and Safety Model Code, NFPA 5000 allows up to four stories and 60 feet. Seattle allows up to six stories, New York up to six, I think Hawaii, they also do five, I think, and a couple of other places, smaller cities, have some differentiation. In California, and I could talk this for a really long time, we never adopted those standards because we just never, I guess we never envisioned building on such, this type of scale until very recently, until honestly this year with 2097, 478, 330. This is an example of a development in Seattle with a courtyard in the middle. On the left is Vancouver. On the right is a building in Paris. The building on the right was built in 10 days. So that's another thing that usually excels with this type of building type, I guess the modularity and the easiness, right? Or the ease that you get by building on standard parcels. Simple. I found this graphic on Twitter. I found it kind of like a pretty good example of how we built here in the U.S. with parking in the middle, with units flanking the sides, and then what they were advocating, which is similar to the LCI. You've got a similar amount of density, but you have a considerable amount of more open space.
It's actually more units, yes.
Yeah, more density per square footage. Another facet that we are working on are setting good objective design standards in our buildings. We want them to be human-scale and geared towards the pedestrian and retail use in the bottom. We also see an advantage of potentially having architects create standard facade plans that may fit on these objective design standards, like lowering, which would help in lowering soft costs for hiring an architect. You have a whole handbook, you pick one, there you go. And yeah, kind of talked about it right there.
And one of the things that we've found across the city is that neighborhood groups often have strong opinions about what their neighborhoods should look like and what they don't want them to look like. And really, it's up to the city to decide how far down this road you want to go. We all know Santa Barbara has sort of the extreme where they say, everything has to be this exact same style here. Like, you must use this tile, you must use this color. It's really up to each community to decide, but part of our idea is to bring the community groups and the neighbors into the process. And like Ed said, you could have some pre-approved designs, facade designs that the neighbors have rubber stamped and say, hey, we really like this. You don't have to require it, but it can be something that builders know, okay, the neighbors are going to like this, and they can use it. And each neighborhood can pick a different kind of style. Montana might look for something beachy like this. Ocean Park might pick Spain. Pico might pick Mexico. And Ocean Park could say, you know what? We really embrace the eclectic nature, and we want architects to have complete freedom of design in our neighborhood because we don't want anything homogeneous, and we want to see what they come up with. So it's really more, it's less about being prescriptive than just bringing the neighbors into the process and the neighborhood groups. Because if, you know, there are companies like Space and Matter who do this in the Netherlands, and it's amazing when you invite people in and listen to them, they're not as likely to fight you. If they feel like they have a stake in it, they've had a say in the decision. So it's really more of a philosophy about bringing the community in to help design what kind of housing they want, what they want it to look like, what they want their community to be about, and really respecting neighbors and what they want, and listening and not dismissing those concerns. We think most people actually have good intentions. And the other thing I want to say about this kind of housing, we didn't touch on affordability. We do believe in IZ even for buildings that are under 17 units or whatever your threshold is, as long as it's feasible. But I will say that all of these units, small apartments with no parking, the market rate is going to be different from most of the units that we're seeing built today. And this is how we've built workforce housing around the world traditionally, is this kind of small apartments above the shops, and they tend to be more affordable. There are probably limits to that on certain streets in Santa Monica because Santa Monica is such an expensive market, but if you have two Teslas, you're probably not going to want to live there. It's, again, we do believe there's a market for it, but we think it's specific segments that are more likely to be interested, and it's young people and it's seniors. Not everybody's going to want to live there. And so the market rate is likely to be naturally more affordable. And the other impact of this is climate. This is a tool from UC Berkeley that really talks about the top climate interventions that cities can enact, and vehicle miles reduced and urban infill are two of the biggest policies, and the LCI combines them. Combined, this would be the top climate intervention that cities can enact. It's really finding a way to build on these small parcels that never have been developable before and finding a way to make it feasible and possible. And really, you just don't have to look far. You have to look to everyone else in the world who's doing this. We're literally the only people who aren't. So there's no reason Santa Monica cannot lead the way and figure this out. We believe it can be done. And it's really about communities advocating for the changes that they want and the kind of housing that they want. And we started from that premise. What do people like? What do people think is beautiful in the most beautiful cities in the world? And it was really this style of housing, which is illegal here, that we found that people like and they want in their community. So why don't we just make that legal and safe? That's our idea. We're happy to take questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. We appreciate it. Give us a second to have...
Could we hear from staff? I think we'd asked staff to weigh in.
Yeah. We had, in, leading up to this, we had asked staff to kind of talk to us about what we're already doing that's consistent with where you're heading. So we want to hear that from staff first before we get back to your questions.
Oh, boy. That was a homework item for us. It's something that we, in meeting with LCI staff earlier this week, just to get a little bit of a preview, more of a head start, we've read some of their documents. We really want to take the time that we need to go ahead and evaluate their entire platform, what they've studied for Santa Monica and presented to us. We have an objective design standards program and process underway as well. So we will need some time to bring that, I guess, that marriage together between their policies and objectives and the work that we're doing and what's already in our code, what's in our policy documents. I think there is, our preliminary thoughts are there are certainly many, many items where we do share the same vision. There may be slightly different ways to get to that outcome, but we are starting to drill down on that next level. Look at the standards, look at their policy platform. Not something we'd be able to present this evening, but we will.
Okay, great. Well, we'll have a couple of questions here.
I have a question for staff.
Okay, you want to turn your mic on?
Thanks, Roxanne. I just have a question for you about that, which is, it sounds like it might be premature. I mean, we'll have questions and discussion, but you've already told us that you have an objective design standard process underway ahead of what we expect to be some pretty substantial changes in our permitting process in the near term. Is there a public component to that process which LCI or anybody else could get involved with?
There will be, yes.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Mr. Lambert?
First, I want to truly say thank you for abiding by, actually sticking with me over the past week or two because I've sent endless questions and emails to you, and you responded fantastically. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm happy to, and we love questions. We constantly iterate based on concern, so give it to us. We're flexible.
It's like I get a mini thesis every time I ask a question. I have a couple of questions, which we've actually talked back and forth about over the past week or two. The whole single-stair thing, I want to understand this. Does the state building code allow that now for three-story buildings?
Yes. The current limit is three, four for, you go into it.
Yes, but to a very limited way. There's constraints to how many units you could put in. There's constraints on height and occupancy use.
And it depends on our...
For your information, if the state approves our Housing Element Amendment, the height limit in neighborhood commercial will be 32 feet, and Main Street will be 28 feet. God knows where that came from. So there could be three stories on neighborhood commercial. The other thing we've talked about, and I don't know that we really have an answer at this point, I really don't want to see anything that displaces current retail or restaurants, or local businesses, basically. And I think if we proceed with this program, that's got to be, for me, a high priority. So how would you, what's your thinking on that?
Yeah, I think we touched on it briefly, and it's really up to the city council to set the priority for how to do it, but it's our North Star, too, because that's what makes those streets livable and walkable and vibrant now, and we don't want to destroy that. We want to embrace that and add housing. So really, again, keeping that retail footprint the same is a critical piece, but there's going to be a period of construction. Some buildings you could add above the existing structure, but most you'd have to rebuild. And so the question is, how can you help those businesses during construction so that they don't go under? And there's a number of different ways. Again, we mentioned what they did in South LA when building the K-line. There was a Metro fund.
Yeah, but that's, Metro has more money than God.
Well, you know, I will say that Metro and SCAG are very interested in this concept because there are priorities for climate-friendly housing. This is climate-friendly housing, not just in the building with cross-ventilation and AC and natural sunlight, but creating this kind of infill housing on walkable streets lowers vehicle miles traveled. So SCAG is very interested and has suggested that cities should be applying for some of their grants for the LCI. Santa Monica is welcome to do that. Yes, they approached us because this is a plan that really prioritizes climate-friendly housing by lowering vehicle miles traveled with the housing. So building this way is a climate intervention, and there are funds out there you could explore. Cities can also come up with funds, different bids in LA, there, Westwood has a bid, there's different business improvement districts. There are ways that you could do it with legacy, longtime, small legacy businesses that really need protections that we don't, you know, small minority-owned businesses.
It's not the new fancy-dancy bread stores and...
Right, right. You know, you don't, some businesses don't need any protecting, and there are others that do.
Follow-up question to this, if you don't mind? I mean, because this is an important aspect of it in terms of how do we protect the existing commercial? And in my experience is, new buildings go in, construction costs make it so that the rents are not going to allow those businesses. And so now you're saying that's up to the council or the city to figure that out, or is that going to be in your performance?
No, I think the design of the buildings takes care of it.
So we're looking at buildings being considerably less costly to build. The majority of buildings that are built today use type 1 construction, so concrete podium that you, most of the time, have underground parking, things that increase the cost. You could have these buildings be completely built out of type 5 without the need of concrete if that is the wish of the developer, to save those type of costs.
And part of the reason, the current style of development that is much larger, really, to get the financing to do that, it really requires an expensive ground floor retail that they'll let them sit empty rather than take a low-cost retail tenant. That's, these large developers, and that's the style with a large retail space, and in order to get certain financing, they maximize, here's the money we can get for the lease. This is a completely different style of development that maintains the same retail footprint. You're not going to get a large anchor chain store. It's just a totally different way of building.
That's going to be an interesting, I mean, that's going to be an important education that you're going to have to do for a lot of people. Because that seems like a big challenge. So I know I cut you off, so I'll let you go ahead and finish your question.
I guess the dilemma for me, having been in this business for a long time, is that, yes, development costs will be less if this all happens. That doesn't mean rents are going to be less. I mean, if you can exact the higher market rent on Ocean Park Boulevard, we can't make you not do that.
Do you want to address them?
Are you referring to commercial rents or residential rents?
Either one. I mean, yes, the housing costs less to bill, but that doesn't mean that the market rent is going to reflect that development cost.
So early on, when we were looking at our policies and kind of structuring our path and developing our, I guess, our policies, we were looking at places in Southern California and Los Angeles and seeing how residential buildings that did not have parking on-site fared. We looked at adaptive reuse buildings, like on Spring Street and Olive, and their rents tended to have, they were objective, I guess, measurements that showed that their rents were lower than the market rents without having parking attached. And yeah.
Well, here's the other issue about parking. The commercial, the retail and the restaurants, whatever, that I'm familiar with, all have parking behind them. And I know at Time Cafe, if you try to get a parking space in that parking lot at lunchtime, it's hopeless. So you can't not replace that parking. I mean, so I don't know how you're going to deal with that.
So before working for the LCI, I worked for, I guess, another company called Civic Enterprise, and we would help with Mont Smith, and we would help bids find extra, I guess, or commercial parking for business owners that needed it. We looked into valet programs. We looked into off-site deals with, I don't know, like, commercial buildings from the 80s that were severely underparked and facilitated a parking program that made sense and made the business owner happy.
City lots. I don't know what your situation here is, but in Culver City, for instance, they have a lot of underparked city lots where you could leave. It's not the same here. And yeah, I figured it might not be in Santa Monica.
I am very skeptical about that work.
Yeah. But another concept here is residents are going to be living right upstairs. You've got added built-in customers living right above your store now.
I mean, it's a handful. I mean, these businesses serve neighborhoods with thousands and thousands of people, many of whom walk, but they also drive.
And when it comes to the retail rents, I don't know if this has ever been explored, but we have explored the concept of tenant protections for the retail. And I don't know if there are legal restrictions. I'm not an expert on it, but I don't see why a city couldn't potentially create tenant protections for the retail and say, honor the prior contract. Most of the revenue from these buildings is going to be from the housing, not from the retail space. So I don't, I mean, again, I'm not a lawyer, but it would be very interesting to explore whether or not you could come up with tenant protections and say you have to honor the prior retail contract.
To God's ears. I mean, HCD will come down on us like a ton of bricks if we do that.
Okay, let's get to questions. Do you have any more questions?
I've got two more questions.
Okay, two more.
You talked about affordable units. We're not talking about inclusionary zoning, capital I, capital Z. You're just thinking these units will be affordable?
No. So in cities that we've worked with, Culver City and Los Angeles, we're working with their planning departments to include inclusionary zoning, so affordable units.
Okay, I just think that's going to be, and the other kind of fallacy of which we're thinking here is that the property owner is going to retain the property. If the property owner sells the property to somebody else who does this, the whole thing gets blown out of the water because of the land price.
We are, we're envisioning an ADU model, similar to a single-family homeowner adding a unit. We want to incentivize that commercial property owner to realize the value of their land, and there's a lot of creative financing ways that you could do that.
We're also working with a number of, I guess, affordable housing providers that have, I guess, excess slots or lots that they can't develop at this moment.
I just think you need to consider the fact that these properties very likely, because a lot of these property owners are really old, they're not going to be retained by that property owner, and they're going to be sold, which is going to change your pro forma drastically.
Yeah, you're very right. So I mean, nothing is stopping a developer from buying four parcels or six parcels or the whole block and redeveloping it. But what we're doing is we're introducing an alternative for property owners to either go into a joint stock development with a developer or to... or to, you know, sell to a mom-and-pop developer that has the funds to only acquire a 3,000-square-foot lot.
Finally, I just want to say, did you really mean it when you said the buildings shouldn't have higher than 30-foot back walls if they're adjacent to R1?
Those are transitional height requirements that we were working with at Culver City.
We have that too, but I just wanted to make sure you guys were on board with that.
We designed a wedding cake sort of thing.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Landers and then Commissioner Fresco.
Thanks. So I'm just, I'm going to do my best not to duplicate Commissioner Lambert's questions. This is really intriguing. And the first thing I want to say, if we're jumping into some sort of discussion, is that I do hope that you'll take an active part in whatever public process the city designs for the objective design standards. I think that's, and it's, it's, and it's an exciting opportunity for the public in general. And you clearly have some, some interesting ideas to explore and they should be part of the process. I share Commissioner Lambert and Chair Reese's concerns about commercial displacement, particularly long-time businesses that I think even in a type 5 building, on a fully depreciated building, that, you know, they're going to have brand-new costs that they're going to want to recoup. And that's going to lead to, that's fundamentally going to lead to commercial displacement, even if you can find somewhere to put those businesses during construction. So I want to ask a question this slightly different way, which is, is there a strategy here to encourage this type of development on functional new build? So for example, where a building is going to come down, there are a lot of soft-story buildings across the region where we're hoping that they will be seismically retrofit. But there may be circumstances where a building ultimately no longer can stand. God forbid there's an earthquake and there is a lot of rebuilding. To me, it sounds like a lot of these building standards are interesting and exciting when the opportunity arises, not as an incentive to displace and replace, number one. So having those standards available may not drive displacement and replacement, but having them available also could help with, could help with new building opportunities. The second place that this, this occurs to me is, for instance, we've alluded to this for future housing. And I'll just be clear that I'm not talking about what's within 1,000 feet of my house. But there will be some properties coming up in the southern part of Santa Monica where we expect there to be housing development, the Boston Properties, the Business Park, where this model, as a way of designing a new neighborhood, could be very exciting, especially if done in close consultation with the neighborhoods and residents. And so it would be interesting to look at it that way. And that's, again, sort of new build, right? And then the third question that I would have is, are there opportunities for this to be a pathway to affordable home ownership? Our city council has consistently asked the question, where is the pathway, not just to affordable housing through rental, but affordable housing through home ownership? And while it's certainly not going to be the main pathway in Santa Monica, this strikes me as a tool that could facilitate that, particularly if you go to a ground lease model and we pair it with something like a community land trust so that what is actually owned is not the land, but in fact the unit. And therefore, the appreciation is not out of hand alongside, when the purchase, bless you, when the purchase, when the property changes hands. So I'm wondering whether, again, this is, this is moving a lot more slowly than you're envisioning in my questions, but it sounds like you're literally laying the groundwork for something that could offer new creative approaches in a variety of different ways without a displace and replace approach.
So a really important factor that I don't want, I don't want it to get lost is that we're heavily, we're looking at the types of units in new apartments that are being developed today. A lot of them are single aspect, meaning that they only get light from one side. They lack cross-ventilation. They're really reliant on air conditioning. And we, and very recently, we've seen a sharp uptick in something called windowless bedrooms. So developers have found a way to, you know, right, right, but, but--
UC Santa Barbara, we hardly knew you.
There you go. Exactly. So this is a response to that as well, you know, livable communities initiative. The live, one of the livable parts of the livable communities initiative is making, you know, better alternatives for the types of buildings that are built today. And I'm not casting, you know, it's not the architect's fault. It's not the planner's fault. It's nobody, it's just outdated code that we just haven't, I mean, it exists in the United States. We just haven't updated it yet because we just weren't allowed to do the type of infill that we're, that we're just starting to, you know, see be allowed, right? So, you know, when, when we were advocating for our state law, we saw a lot of stakeholders, even outside of the Small Infill Developer Group, tell us, you know, with vertical shared access, this completely changes everything. You know, a lot of small families, you know, when they're barely starting out, they're kind of forced to move to the suburbs, right, where they could have the two-bed, one-bath layout where they could, you know, got sunlight in their children's room. And, you know, that's just a product that is not too common today at an affordable level. We're, like you said, we're building the groundwork to allow that type of bedroom layout to exist in the first place. So it's structural changes.
We've had the, and this is my last thing I'll say, is we've had the discussion in the, in the preparation of our housing element about, you know, our frustration, it's an ongoing frustration with Ellising perfectly good apartment buildings, knocking them down and replacing them with these three-unit condos that are exorbitantly expensive and functionally reduce the population, reduce density, and make Santa Monica even less accessible to people than it was before. In our housing element, we recognize that we needed to increase the density, right, sort of start encouraging people to build six and seven units. What I'm seeing is the potential, and I haven't run the numbers, but like, in theory, the potential is that with some of these design reforms, you could actually get to a place where if there, if, not that I'm, you know, advocating for condoification, I'm not, but to the extent that somebody makes that choice on the market, that we could feasibly require an affordable unit that would be for sale, that would actually end up getting sold.
So one of the reasons why we've been gaining, I think, I personally think that we've gained a lot of traction in places like Los Angeles is because our infill model, like you said, is geared towards R3 occupancy use. So it's, when these buildings are being built, they're utilizing single family or duplex building code.
Currently.
Currently. And this building code facilitates them to, you know, you know, have lower standards on ADA access, on fire mitigation strategies, sprinkler systems are lower. And so the per foot, per square foot cost for these developments are incredibly low and they outcompete R2 occupancy uses, which is the type of, you know, building code that we use for multifamily construction. So one of, what we're trying to do is create that parity to then allow, you know, council members or commissioners to create the policies to incentivize, you know, developers shifting to, to, you know, higher-density, safer buildings.
Great. Commissioner Fresco.
Hi. First, I just have to say, I think it's hilarious that the greatest new progressive idea in housing is something that was invented in the 1880s.
Yes.
This thing. One of the, I mean, I totally appreciate the idea that this is not possible and this is a really usable housing type and that we just have to fix our rules so that we can provide this in a safe way according to today's standards. Totally get that. But to create the kind of community, I mean, I grew up on a street like that. It has to be a consistent thing. And are there incentives besides the idea that it's just a really cool idea to make developers rethink the way they, they build? Like, this provides opportunity for smaller developers and single parcel landowners who aren't developers to do something. But what about those big donut building builders? How do we get them to think about it? Is that, is there a program or--
We want to incentivize this so that they can outcompete. Because honestly, state law, you know, you've got 2011. Your neighborhood commercial streets have already been upzoned in the housing element. You know, you've limited lot consolidation to 15, maybe 11,000 in some places, I think, at the last council meeting, which, you know, we'll see if HCD says that's not feasible. They may come back and say, you need to make it feasible. We have a plan to make it feasible. But I, I think, you know, the idea is to incentivize the housing we want. And, you know, there's a set of ways you can do that.
And, and like this, our stakeholders and, and, you know, electors that we've been working with, you know, recognize this. And so our strategy as of now has been very pinpointed towards certain corridors where walkability and transit improvements are already starting to gain traction and improve upon those. So our strategy, you know, to--
For incentives.
Right, right. So our strategy is a little bit different from, I guess, other planning strategies of more master plan. You know, you get the whole thing at once. Ours is more of a resilient approach. You know, it's, it's a par, it's a gradual, you know, growing of a city, right? What isn't resilient is, I mean, what isn't gradual is, you know, the safety, the infrastructure, right? Putting in the bike lanes, improving the transit. But once you lay that foundation, you just, you know, you let it grow over time and you got, you got a better saying. I have a saying that, that goes, when was the best time to plant, or when is the best time to plant a tree? 20 years ago. When's the second best time to plant a tree?
Today.
Today.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Other commission comments? Commissioner Fondemarini, while we're down on that side?
A couple, a couple of questions following up on the rental of the commercial property. Do you have any examples of where there was a commercial property rent protection the way we have analogous to our, you know, rental protection for residential property in the United States? Do you have any examples of that?
No.
Okay. Do you have any examples of case studies of these types of buildings that you're proposing?
Yes.
Okay. And can we see those? Are they, can we see the construction cost, the land cost, and the rental stream from those buildings?
I don't have them on hand, but New York builds this way, Seattle builds this way. So I could provide them if, if you'd like.
So, and then the last part, of course, is the energy part, which is, you know, we can build net-zero buildings, which is the only kind of building that we should be building. And unfortunately, our housing element in Sacramento doesn't recognize that. But with those same case studies pencil out, if they were only three stories high, which is the size of a net-zero building today. Now, maybe tomorrow with improvements in the technology, we could go higher. But today, net-zero buildings higher than three stories, including this building, is a case in point, can't be built. We don't know how yet. So I'm asking about those case studies. Are they for three-story buildings?
I don't have an answer to that question today.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Raskin. I will say that a lot of the costs, and we've heard this from many developers, are soft costs that are avoidable. And, you know, I think that there is, it's amazing, again, how this kind of housing is built all over the world and it doesn't cost, you know, nearly as much in other places. And there are a lot of things the governments can control. There are a lot of costs that are added on that are unnecessary, whether that's sequel lawsuits or, you know, not having things happen quickly, you know, and really dragging out the timeframe for development really adds to the cost. So I think there's a lot we can do to lower costs and to streamline. I know cities are working on this anyway, but--
Well, that's what we need, that's what we really kind of need to see how that's, how that's done.
Yeah.
So if we can move on to Commissioner Raskin, Vice Chair Raskin's questions.
Yeah, I want to echo the thanks that my colleagues have shared for coming here tonight. And I'm glad you talked about process. That was going to be one of my questions. And I'm curious if you have process-specific recommendations for Santa Monica?
Do you want to talk about--
Or, you know, you don't have to say what they are now, but will you be sharing those in the future?
Yeah, we have shared some with your planning department, one of them being local vertical shared access reform. It's, 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 it's not like planning, it's, you know, it's fire, life, and safety. So, you know, you would have to create a roundtable of, you know, experts, firefighters. But it's, it's a thing that cities typically, you know, engage on once in a while. LA did it with their adaptive reuse program. Most recently, they did it with the helipad requirement on their skyscrapers. They took it out. So it's, that's, that's, that's one of the primary ones. We have like other specific, you know, design standards.
Yeah, I was more curious on how folks can get entitlements faster. I think I saw in one of your presentations that your goal was to get the entitlement process done in 90 days.
90 days.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, honestly, there's, I think you can look to some best practices in cities around the country that do this much faster. There are places where things happen much more quickly. And, you know, I hate to say it, but sometimes they're red states. And it's like, you know, we don't want to emulate red states, but when it comes to housing, we need more housing and we need it on a time certain. That's the thing we hear over and over again, is the lack of a time certain for getting through these processes. Every process that, every agency that touches on housing. You know, in LA, it's DWP that'll screw things up at the last minute and make you throw out your plans and you have to spend a ton of money to redo it. We can't be doing that if we want more housing. We have to have, say, we're going to get through the process and we're going to give you a predictable amount of time to handle all of it. And if we do that, it significantly lowers costs. That's just a fact.
Thanks. I have two other real quick questions. You know, when going through this pro forma process, it's, it's really difficult to capture all the externalities of this, especially the effects of gentrifying non-participating parcels in the same street. And I'm curious if you've thought of any ways in which we can, as a city or as a developer, document what some of those externalities are or quantify them in some kind of way?
It's a really good question. So I, your first part of the question is like, you know, how do you deal with gentrification displacement? The way that we have it written, or the way Los Angeles has it written, is this would only look into properties that do not have existing housing units. So this is a zero-displacement policy in Los Angeles. I, we're very open to look into other, I guess, variables to find, you know, gentrification effects.
Got it. And that's one quick question for, for staff or hopefully someone who's got some institutional knowledge up here with me. I heard from one of our former mayors that at some point in the last two decades, Santa Monica signed on to something called the Owani Principles, which are, I think, similar to what you're advocating here. And I'm curious if anybody knows about that--
Do you know about that? No.
I think that's where the name comes from.
That's a new one.
Yeah, I don't know the details of that, but I know, yes, that a lot of the council members would attend the Owani Conference that was at the Owani Hotel. And there were some things that came out of that. I don't recall that it was ever codified in any way, but as a kind of overarching goal, I think that was something we, they talked about.
Got it. Okay, that's all I got. Thank you very much.
I'll say, none of these ideas are actually radical. We're taking--
Right, yeah.
--ideas that have been around and we are communicating them to the general public at a time when housing is top of mind. And I think, you know, part of the reason now is a moment to pursue this is because people really care about housing affordability. I mean, again, I'm a mom and what I hear from parents with kids who are graduating from college is, you know, they're moving to Portland and Austin. They're moving out of state because they can't afford to live in the region. And, you know, parents don't want their kids, or they're moving back in with their parents. So, you know, there's two choices. They're either moving in with you or they're moving out of state. And so I think that issues that may not have touched everyone in the past are touching pretty much everyone now. And people get it. Voters are understanding that there's an affordability crisis. We have a housing crisis. And that we really need to do something about it. And I think that that's the reason some of these ideas right now, the public is sparking to them. And it has to do with state law and the fact that there really is no choice but to build more housing. So the question is, what kind of housing do we want?
Can I just say one final thing? Sam?
Commissioner Tolkien, do you have comments?
You're, you're working in Los Angeles. You have the same problems, basically, that we have in the sense that there are a lot of smaller commercial buildings that are unreinforced masonry. They have to conform to the earthquake code, which is ratcheted up every-- They have to conform to the earthquake code, which is ratcheted up every year. So how, how are you dealing with that? Or are you dealing with that? Or you try? Because most of the time I've found structural engineers tell me that you can't fix this building, you have to rip it down and start over again. And that's going to add to your cost.
So one strategy that we've been working on in L.A. with a council member is potential facade retention. And that's when you, you know, you knock down the majority of the building, stick some, you know, metal beams to hold it up, and then you build a new, new building around it and maintaining the same, I guess, aesthetic around it. That's, that's one way to do it. But you, you...
You're right.
Yeah, I mean, some of these buildings, you're right, cannot be built without bringing down the existing structure. That's just a reality. In some cases, you can add without doing that, but in most cases, there's going to be a period where, of construction time. So, you know, part of what we've really looked into is, you know, what are the creative ways we can deal to, you know, to explore to deal with this? And, you know, have commercial tenant protections ever happen? Maybe not. But again, this is an innovative city and, you know, we tend to look at not what has happened in the past or what exists now, but what do we want and how do we get there? What do we need to do to change the things in order to make it feasible? So, you know, we're a creative group and we like to explore ideas that maybe haven't been tried in the past. And there's no reason we can't look into that. And just because it hasn't happened before doesn't mean it can't happen in the future.
I just have one final.
Okay, I'm going to let you...
Oh, thank you so much.
And then I'm going to speak.
Okay. I, I just wanted to go back to something you said and ask, I know, I, I don't know you didn't mean it the way it sounded. This commission has spent the past three years working on the housing crisis in Santa Monica. We've found sites for thirteen thousand housing units. So this is not like the be all and end all. I mean, the amount of housing you're proposing is not really going to frankly add up to much. So I just wanted you to, I know you know that, that, that we've been very delicate...
We are not the only solution and we don't claim to be. This is one idea. It's not, it's not a solution to everything.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. So I want to thank you too for coming out and talking to us about this. These are all great ideas. I think if I was you, I would lead with that last slide about the value of the VMTs and the, and the energy efficiency, because that sells really well. You're right, a lot of these things are not new ideas. I mean, you say the fifteen-minute community, I think activity centers, which we've had here for a while, streamlining environmental, or entitlement processes and building processes. L.A. had twelve to two under VIOGOSA. So there's, these are thoughts that are out there and how you implement them are going to be critical. What I really appreciate that you're doing is you're advocating on a citizen level. Where I'm a land use consultant, and when I go out and try to tell people how important it is to have housing in their community, it doesn't play well. But hearing that from, you know, hearing that from other community members, I think, is going to be important. And obviously, it's a huge, huge pushback. I mean, if you, if you pay attention to that favorite next door, you know, there's ten people who are so pissed about the bike lanes on Seventeenth Streets in our city that they want them out immediately. So there's a lot of advocacy work here and I'm happy that you guys are, are doing it. But it seems like there's still a lot of work to be done on getting these small sites to work.
Yeah, and there's still a lot of community organizing work to be done. I mean, honestly, we've been doing a lot of it in L.A. and we're only, we've only started in Santa Monica in the last couple of months. And there's a huge education piece with it. You know, people, this stuff is really wonky. I didn't know anything about this two years ago. And I was a concerned citizen looking at unhoused neighbors and going, what the heck is happening and how do we fix this problem? And I think a lot of people genuinely want to know more about this, but it's really technical. And it takes someone, it takes communicating in a way that people can understand, and that takes time, so.
Yeah, there are like, there are some long-term, you know, goals, right, getting to that picture, but there are also short-term goals, like immediately looking into building code reform. That would help our buildings, but it would also, oh, affordable housing buildings that San Diego Housing Federation signed on to strong support and formed a coalition with us because, so I, I didn't show this in, in our slides, but this saves significant amount of hard costs on affordable housing construction, so it's...
We, we see that in the city. We've been fighting since I've been involved with the commission for over, you know, fifteen years about the high-rise level in Santa Monica. And the Santa Monica says it's fifty-five feet. And after fifty-five feet, you got to go to the high-rise, all the stuff, and it adds tons of cost. So we see that. And I just encourage you guys to keep doing, doing what you're doing and keep fighting. And we'll, we'll support where we can. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for having us. And, you know, we're available by email as Lesley can tell you to answer any questions. I, we love answering questions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to get ready for our next agenda item, which would be, I guess we're going to move all the way up to eleven A. But I'd like to take a quick break before we get start, before we get started. Five minutes, please. I have seven fourteen, so back here. Seven twenty at the latest, which is actually six.
Changing.
It's okay, we won't dock you your time.
Sorry Sheila, would you mind checking this? Okay. Sorry about that, can we just pause for a minute?
We will continue to pause for a minute. I'm changing the slides, I'm changing. Not trying to put more pressure on this gentleman, but I'm wondering if this is gonna take a little while? Should we try to do another item, or is he, or we're on the cusp of fixing this? Okay, I apologize for the delay and staff, take your. Okay. Spinning wheel.
Alright, I think we're good to go, sorry about that.
Hey, no problem, let's.
The slides are not moving on me.
It's happened to everybody in this room who's presented, their PowerPoint did not work at some point.
Um, okay, alright, let's start from the top. Yeah, so this project is for twenty-two ENT dash three eleven at seventeen twenty-seven Ocean Park Boulevard, next slide please. Uh, the property is located in the Sunset Park neighborhood, um, in the neighborhood commercial zone, and here it's highlighted in the red, and the subject parcel is bounded by the yellow box in the center. Next slide. Uh, the spectral linear parcel is sixty-five hundred square feet, and it is developed with an existing one-story commercial building and associated surface parking in the rear. Next slide, please. And consistent with the neighborhood commercial land use designation, the immediate neighborhood is characterized by a smaller-scale neighborhood serving businesses such as cafes, retail services such as tailor, hair salons and such. It also includes several medium-density multi-residential buildings such as the one depicted in the slide on the right, which is actually abutting the subject property. Next slide. To the immediate north of the project site, across from an alleyway, the neighborhood is zoned for and comprises single-family development. Next slide. Um, I also want to note that the project site is also adjacent to an existing daycare and early childcare facility called the First School, which based on the State Department of Social Services records, it has an active license since two thousand and four for up to sixty-three students. Next slide, please. Uh, so just a little background about Big and Tiny, it has operated out of seventeen thirty-one Ocean Park Boulevard since two thousand and eighteen. It currently provides childcare and educational services to children, parents and guardians who remain on-site and use the facility as a co-working office space. Next slide, please. And the project involves expansion of the existing facility into the adjacent eighteen hundred twenty-three-square-foot tenant space at seventeen twenty-seven Ocean Park Boulevard, resulting in a total of four thousand seventy-four square feet of space for the use. It'll also involve expansion of the outdoor play areas behind the building into existing non-required surface parking spaces at the rear along the alleyway. There will be minor exterior alterations to create a new vet, um, entry vestibule at the front. Uh, there will be relocation of trash recycling facilities, a reconfiguration of interior spaces, and establishment of two loading spaces, one at the street and one in the rear. Next slide, please. So this is an existing site and floor plan of the property. Here you can see the two tenant spaces, um, the existing occupied space is the one at the top, and with the lower one is the one that they hope to expand into. And there is the existing play area in the green, along with some of the parking spaces that exist along the alleyway on the left of this slide. Next slide, please. This is proposed, this is the site, uh, proposed site and floor plan with highlights of the various elements of the proposed scope of work. And here you see a wholly combined tenant space with a reconfigured floor plan and expanded play area in the rear and other improvements and part of the scope of work that I mentioned previously. Next slide, please. So this project is before you today because Santa Monica Municipal Code nine eleven zero two zero permits childcare and early childhood education facilities with no more than seventy-five hundred square feet of floor area and/or forty linear feet of ground floor street frontage. Facilities that exceed these thresholds require approval of a conditional use permit. Uh, so a conditional use permit is required in this case to allow the expansion of the existing tenant space, which will result in forty-nine feet nine inches of ground floor street frontage in the neighborhood commercial zone. Next slide, please. Uh, so in planning commission's decision on this project, we ask you to consider the following, namely the compatibility of the childcare and early childhood education facility exceeding the forty-foot threshold within the context of the surrounding neighborhood commercial district along the seventeen-hundred block of Ocean Park Boulevard, and also the effectiveness of the recommended conditions of approval in minimizing any potential adverse impacts to the surrounding neighborhood connected with the expanded operation of the facility. Next slide. Um, in staff's analysis, we have looked at neighbor compatibility, compatibility, excuse me, as proposed. We find that overall the Big and Tiny is compatible with the type of smaller-scale neighborhood serving businesses encouraged in the neighborhood commercial district. The proposed alterations will be subject to approval by the Architecture Board or Review for compatibility through that design review process. And we've also, in court, staff has also incorporated the conditions approval to help ensure neighborhood compatibility through mitigation of adverse impacts. Uh, next slide, please. Um, another major component of this project does involve parking and loading, and it's something that we have consulted with mobility on. The applicant, uh, or as I mentioned before, there will be two loading spaces, one on the street and one at the rear. The applicant has provided a loading plan which we have reviewed, and this is a summary table of what they are proposing with drops, drop-offs and pickups broken down into several fifteen-minute increments. And this makes the assumption that there will be a, um, about a twenty-five percent, um, percentage of the student body who will be like walking to, to school rather than being dropped off by vehicle. The applicant also noted that the loading will be monitored by staff and volunteers. Next slide, please. Uh, regarding conformance with the land use and circulation element, um, the loose invision, invisions Ocean Park Boulevard supported by the Sunset and Pico neighborhoods as a local-serving boulevard. Here we, there are several goals, um, that we have found that the proposed project will meet, such as locating local services and amenities within walking distance of the Sunset Park neighborhood, establishing open Ocean Park Boulevard as a local-serving boulevard, and also providing pickup, pickup and drop-off for childcare, early education and private school projects that are designed to be operated and sensitive to neighborhoods of the surrounding area. Um, next slide, please. Um, as far as project proposal, staff has proposed a number of conditions of approval, namely that outdoors play, play area should be enclosed by fences or walls at least four feet tall, provision of outdoor play areas for children older than two, implement compliance with state regulations, also time limits to organize outdoor activities, um, state licensing, uh, park, uh, parking and loading operations plan that will be subject to planning and mobility review. Per the applicant's proposal, fifteen-minute loading time slots, loading schedules, inclusion of staff monitoring, and provision of rules of conduct through like a printed pamphlet or other information source for parents and guardians. And lastly, that there will be a neighborhood liaison that will be available to address neighborhood concerns. Next slide, please. Um, additional, as project-specific conditions we have, are suggesting are that special events and weekends be limited indoors between nine and five. That lights, noise, activities, loading and other actions will be, um, restricted to not cause adverse impacts on neighbors, that there's a prohibition of amplified sound, and, uh, there will be timed operation restrictions on trash and outdoor cleaning. And lastly, that exterior alterations be consistent with Secretary of Interior standards. Next slide, please. Uh, so there are eight findings required of a conditional use permit, which I'll paraphrase. They are that the use is conditioning allowed in the zone and conforms with the municipal code, general plan and specific plan consistency, that, uh, physical suitability for the land use and compatibility of the land use. Next slide. That the compatibility of the use, that is compatible with the use of those existing in the area of, that there be physical compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, that there be no potential significant impacts, environmental impact, excuse me, and that, and that the proposed use would not be publicly detrimental. Next slide, please. Uh, so this project was duly noticed to property owners and tenants within seven hundred and fifty square feet, I'm sorry, seven hundred and fifty feet of the project site. Notice was published in the Santa Monica Daily Press. As of this afternoon, the city has received fifteen letters of support for the project and six expressing concern and/or opposition to the project. Supporters of the project generally have touched on the need for quality childcare options, and, uh, big and tiny's role is a good neighbor. Those in opposition to the project are generally concerned over noise impacts from past outdoor events, noise concerns from an expanded operation, potential traffic congestion issues, and calls for further technical study of potential traffic impacts. Next slide, please. But based on a review of the application and information on the record, staff overall supports the request to allow the applicant to expand into the adjacent tenant space, and does recommend that Planning Commission approve the proposed conditional use permit, case number twenty-two ENT three eleven. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have. Thanks.
Commission, do we have any questions? I'm gonna go with Commissioner Fontana-Ardi first.
Thank you for your excellent report. Is there a reason why the Secretary of Interior standards are being invoked on this project? Is it on the historical resources inventory?
Oh, yes, it is on the historic resources inventory.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Then if we work our way back.
I have a question regarding that, but it wasn't evaluated, so is everything on the HRA subsequent to the Secretary of Interior standards? And that seems like a real major hoop to jump through.
Um, based on the proposal, that the, based on the proposal, proposed scope of work, which is really minor, it, it, it won't warrant, like review, uh, or environmental review to that extent, but.
So does it have to go to the Landmarks Commission?
It does not.
Well, that's one relief. Why, why does it go to the ARB?
Um, it, it's for exterior, um, exterior alterations to a non-residential building.
Is there any way to expedite really small projects like this, so that they don't get stuck in the?
I, I should clarify, this, this will likely qualify for an administrative review.
Oh, cool, okay, that's good to know.
Not review by the full board.
Excellent, thank you.
Just wanted to add also with respect to the inventory, we are, we are still using the inventory as a best prac, you know, in terms of its use as a best practice tool. So we are reviewing the changes, we're not requiring additional extra review that a project wouldn't be subject to, but we do want to advise for compliance.
Commissioner Landers?
Could you please walk us through the mobility review?
I'm gonna have mobility staff.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
Hi, good evening, I'm Peter Javatowski with the Mobility Division. In particular, are you, I mean, just in general overview of, you know, how we came to what we're at now?
Yeah, I have questions. I'm particularly interested in the circulation, and before I ask the questions, I just wanted to, um, request an understanding of how you arrived at your conclusions, so I understand where you're coming from first.
So, so right now, um, I'm not exactly sure exactly how the existing childcare facility manages the operations of their parking and loading.
Okay.
But the concept behind where we've landed where we are right now is that, um, you know, the city code allows, when not expanding above five thousand square feet or changes of use five thousand square feet or less, uh, we have the ability to utilize a parking and loading operations plan to minimize impacts to the public right away. loading operations plan to minimize impacts to the public right of way. So in this particular case, we looked at the particular site and the development proposal, and we worked with the applicant to allow them to make their application for director-approved loading on the street side on Ocean Park Boulevard, and then also to begin to take some of that demand for loading and provide a space on the alley that could serve the dual purpose of an ADA parking space and an accessible loading zone to take some of that loading demand. And so, the concept is to manage the operations behind the morning and the evening pickup and drop-off procedure, such that they are dividing the demand in a sensible way amongst the street and the alley, and then metering the arrival and departure of, of, you know, parents and guardians when they do their pickup and drop-off, such that they are working within the amount of space that's provided, so that the demand for passenger loading does not exceed the supply, and that there will be minimal or no impacts to the public right of way during that period, such as, you know, backing up into Ocean Park Boulevard, or excessive backups in the alley, and, and noise, and how students get into the building, you know, from, from the passenger vehicle and so forth. And so, we have gotten a long way towards that particular end. You know, there is some operational details that we're working on, you know, arranging that we would through the plan check process as part of the conditions of approval, and, you know, we believe that that will mitigate the demand so that the impacts are not significant.
Thank you. Is there, to your, to Mobility Division's knowledge, are there any other parcels on that stretch of Ocean Park that are subject to P L O P under city approval, or have other, otherwise, a C U P operating that affects their operations, their circulation?
No, I'm not sure about the parcel that's next door of the school, whether, yeah, so that, you know, I'm not sure if that had happened. You know, the concept for having a loading plan in, for daycare, in, for childcare facilities is not, has existed for some time, I'm not sure when that precisely was established, but certainly before the concept of the, what is now the parking and loading operations plan, as it was kind of created in two thousand and fifteen, and the subsequent I Z O.
And to your knowledge, did the Mobility Division consult with the neighbor, the childcare facility next door about what they do?
Everything we've done so far has strictly been related to the application that's before us.
So there's been no review of the hours of operation of the neighboring childcare facility, or any uploading, or drop-off and pickup procedures that are in place right now?
Well, we haven't, there wasn't any information available about this.
It's literally online. It's literally on their website, publicly available when they offer, when, when their program starts and when their program ends. It's, doesn't require a phone, I mean, I would have hoped there would have been a phone call, but literally that information, I'm looking at it right now. So.
We were referencing the records that we look in the city.
I see.
City records associated with that.
Okay, well, I'll have more to ask about that later, but I just, before I, and before we get to it, I just wanted to understand what work was done. I think we need to hear from the applicant and the public. Thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner Lambert.
Are we aware of any complaints about the operation of either this childcare or the one next door regarding traffic, or loading, or drop-off? Are there any resident complaints about any of that?
Not, not of any formal complaints.
Informal?
So, I mean, it, through the, through this process of communicating with, with some of the neighbors, interested parties, I have received some emails and, and had phone calls with some neighbors expressing concern, but there have not been any enforcement cases on file.
Frankly, I live more than a thousand feet away, but I didn't even know it was a childcare center. I mean, that's how unobtrusive it is, so.
We have Commissioner, Vice Chair Raskin.
Thank you, and forgive me if I missed this in the staff reporter presentation, but some of the public comments we received indicated that, and I'll ask this of the project applicant too, but indicated that as an accessory use of the structure, there's a party business going on, or that the applicant is leasing out the property to parties. Can you speak to that?
It's my understanding that the, and, and, yeah, the applicant probably elaborate more on how that functions and how that works, but there have been, they, they have made this, the facility available for like children's birthday parties and things of that nature that are in their, like, the rear outdoor play area.
One more question.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I need to ask a circulation question again, and, and this goes to sort of what's, what the city's requirements are with P L O Ps. The applicant, the, the use of the alley as, for drop-off and pickup, there's, there's some, there's some contradictory language in, in the staff report about whether or not greeters would be used in the alley, and so, I'm not clear about whether that's, whether that's currently seen as a requirement. If it's not a requirement, I'm just wondering what the mobility, sorry to bring you back up again, but what the mobility division, how the mobility division imagines that children, who by the way are mostly shorter than the front end of an S U V, that's really important to know, how those children will get in and out of vehicles, and what those vehicles will do if the expectation is that their parents will, or their caregivers, will be bringing them into and out from the back door of the, are you imagining that they're gonna pull into a parking spade and, space and then back out again and keep going? Like, what's the, what's the, what are you imagining, how are you imagining that's gonna happen?
So this was something that we have been talking about recently, and we have not had a discussion with the applicant at this time, but one of the things that we frequently see in an urban location when it comes to this type of procedure is that either a volunteer or an ambassador, you know, facilitates the intake of the child into the childcare facility, thereby, you know, eliminating the need for the parent or guardian to get out of the automobile, to stop the automobile, get out of the automobile, and then bring the child into the facility, which takes considerably longer than stopping, having somebody approach the passenger side of the vehicle, making sure that, you know, parents, guardians are advised to be prepared for a quick transition, that they're packed, they're ready, to intake that child, bring them in, and allow them to move on, and that, you know, in turn, will reduce the amount of turnaround time for that particular passenger loading activity, and then we can look at that, kind of, those metering levels every fifteen minutes become much more realistic and, and, you know, easier to.
And just for clarification, you're saying that those are frequently volunteers, they're not?
Well, sometimes, it's just, it depends on how, you know, the establishment wants to go about it. Sometimes it can be volunteer parents that are part of a collective that are, you know, providing the childcare service, you know, or it could be hired, you know, staff or faculty of the childcare.
It's a little out of our jurisdiction, but I would have real questions about the, who bears the liability for the child between the car and the location, but we can come back to that.
That would be up to the applicant.
I see, okay, thank you.
I see no more questions right now, so if we get out of the applicant's presentation, just to remind you, there was a ten-minute timeline.
I'm gonna have somebody else do the.
I'm just gonna test that the slide progression.
Okay, great, thank you.
We'll give you a second to make sure those work before we get to start the timer, please.
Perfect.
Looks good?
Yep, looks great. Good evening, my name is Sue Steinberg, I'm from Howard Robinson and Associates. I'm joined tonight by the applicant, Kelsey Bobow, owner and operator of Big and Tiny. We'll be available to answer any questions afterwards. So Big and Tiny has been operating, as David said, since two thousand and eighteen. It currently has an enrollment of approximately twenty-five children. The proposed project includes the expansion of the outdoor play area behind the building into the existing non-required surface parking spaces, new trash and recycling facilities, and a reconfiguration of the interior spaces. As you've all also heard, the project will provide two loading spaces, one site access from the alleyway, and the other at the front utilizing a metered space on Ocean Park Boulevard. As David explained in his presentation, a childcare facility is allowed by right in the neighborhood commercial zone with some size limitations and up to forty feet of linear ground floor street frontage. It is the proposed expansion of the tenant space next door that makes our frontage forty-nine feet, nine inches, thus triggering the C U P and why we're here tonight. The site is here in Sunset Park neighborhood. The one-story building was built in nineteen forty-six, consisting of two tenant spaces. Big and Tiny currently provides childcare to children whose parents remain onsite and use the facility as a co-working office space. The expansion into the adjacent tenant space adds eighteen hundred and twenty-three square feet for a total of four thousand seventy-four square feet. Big and Tiny will no longer be providing co-working office space after the expansion. Here is the proposed floor plan. Ocean Park Boulevard is on the right side of the plan, and the alley is on the left. The proposed interior space will have five classrooms, as well as a nap room and other ancillary facilities, such as a reception area and indoor bike parking. The outdoor play area was expanded to provide outdoor space as required by the state for childcare licensing, and the proposed two-hundred-and-thirty-square-foot trash and recycling area is new. Here are the two loading spaces that will be used for passenger pickup and drop-off. One is on the, is an onsite passenger loading space accessible from the alley, like I said, and the other is the onsite passenger loading space on the frontage of the curb. We have worked with and been reviewed by Planning, Mobility, Housing and Human Services, Building and Safety, and the Refuge Recovery and Recycling Divisions. With this approval, Kelsey hopes to increase the number of attendees to a maximum of fifty-five children, providing care for infants up to six years old. Operationally, the facility will be open Monday through Friday, eight AM to five-thirty PM. Additionally, we propose weekend operating hours of nine to five for family and infant care education classes and birthday special, birthday party special events. They will be limited to indoors only. We have submitted a passenger loading operations plan, as Peter noted, utilizing the two loading zones for passenger pickup and drop-off. Both the morning drop-offs and the afternoon pickups will be divided between the two spaces, so one will be in the front and the other in the rear of the building. Families will be assigned specific drop-off and pickup times based on the age and their daily schedule. The times will be staggered to create a better flow of children entering and exiting the facility. Drop-offs will occur between eight AM and nine, nine fifteen AM, and pickups will be between two forty-five and three fifteen PM, and then again at four forty-five and five fifteen PM, which is their extended day schedule. Big and Tiny closes at five thirty. Based on the current enrollment, the existing school draws from neighboring community, and Big and Tiny anticipates approximately twenty-five percent of the families will be coming and going via walking, bike riding, and carpooling. As you saw in the draft STOa in your packet, and as David mentioned, we can meet the findings necessary for approving the conditional use permit. I'm not gonna discuss each of those, but I'd like to just highlight our compliance with a couple of those. So as you know, Big and Tiny is located in the N C District, which is intended to maintain and enhance small-scale neighborhood shopping districts. The seventeen-hundred block of Ocean Park Boulevard is improved with neighborhood uses, and others that promote walking clientele with several medium-density residential buildings interspersed among them. The project is consistent with goals and objectives of the loose. The loose always envisioned Ocean Park Boulevard as a local-serving boulevard, its complete street for pedestrian bikes, transit, and autos, with an enhanced streetscape and dining, retail, and services needs within walking distance of the neighborhoods. So we meet loose goal N sixteen, which seeks to locate local services and amenities within walking distance of the Sunset Park neighborhood, and B twenty-one, which seeks to establish Ocean Park Boulevard as a local-serving boulevard, with a distinctive neighborhood that includes the subject block of Seventeenth Street. While we are compliant with Ocean Park Boulevard's pedestrian-oriented mix of uses, we are also sensitive to our location adjacent to our residential neighborhood. In addition to establishing standards for childcare, staff are proposing additional operational conditions to ensure we can operate as a good neighbor, and that the childcare use works harmoniously with the surrounding neighborhood. So as stated in the draft STOa, a few of the proposed conditions that we will comply with do include limiting the use of the facility on weekends to indoor only, as I mentioned, utilizing one onsite passenger loading zone and one passenger loading zone on Ocean Park, and staffing both areas for pickup and drop-off to ensure the smooth transition in and out of school. Those would be staff positions, not volunteers. And pointing an onsite neighborhood liaison as contact person, and a prohibition on any amplified noise in the outdoor area. So as to outreach, Kelsey met and corresponded several times with residents in the area. She shared the site plans and loading plans with neighbors who requested them. She also reached out to the nursery school next door to see if there was any coordination that could be adopted to improve morning and evening pickup and drop-offs. In fact, it was due to feedback from neighbors across the alley that prompted the relocation of the new wall trash and recycling area. Originally, it had been earmarked to be built parallel to the onsite passenger loading zone, but at the neighbor's suggestion, it was moved to create a wall along the alley to provide a better buffer between the playground noise and the residents across the alley. I'm sure all the commissioners saw the letters in the public correspondence section, or those that have been added today. We received a total of twenty-eight letters of support, many from families who attend or have attended Big and Tiny. Six neighbors expressed concerns, primarily related to noise on the weekends and traffic that exists in the alley. I've mentioned several times our proposed passenger loading and operations plan to utilize the two parking spaces, the staggered pickup, and the staffing of each of the loading zones. We think this plan can work. This is a normal process for schools and childcare facilities. Hours when the children are getting picked up and dropped off are of limited duration. The site is in the neighborhood commercial district, which seeks to provide neighborhood-serving uses, and that is exactly what this is. The concern expressed by folks about the noise on the weekends will be resolved by condition number eight. That limits the weekend events to indoor use only. There had been birthday parties at the site utilizing the outdoor space, but after meeting with the neighbors last year and early this year, and hearing their concerns, Kelsey stopped using the outdoor play area for parties completely. We, we do not rent the park, the space, we actually, all the parties are organized through Big and Tiny, staff is there, Big and Tiny staff is there when there is a party, and it's, it's never a rental space. It's very difficult, and I'm gonna say financially fraught, to operate a childcare facility. Hosting birthday parties allowed Big and Tiny to survive. Many childcare operations did not survive the pandemic. So I would like you to include condition eight as drafted in the STOa, and allow us to use the facility for events on the weekends, limited from nine AM to five PM, and indoors only. And that's all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much for your presentation. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Fresco.
Hi, sorry, I have one question. In the staff report, it said that you have a, the reason it's called Big and Tiny is because you have a flexible workspace for the parents. So in the past, and is that, can you continue?
No, actually, I don't think it is. It's a difference in licensing as well, so the new licensing will be, so the parents can leave their children and go off-site.
I see.
So that's, that's sort of the differentiation.
So that's why this whole loading drop-off thing is so new, and why you're creating it from scratch?
Correct, and the fact that we never needed a C U P before, right? Because it was only the existing space, which was less than the forty, now we're asking for the addition, so that's.
Right, right, I understand that, yeah.
That's why.
Okay. Just a little note in that I recently, I won't say where, but I did pull over and park somewhere, and suddenly the back door opened, and somebody was shoving a kid into my car. So.
You didn't shoot him.
I didn't shoot him, and the kid knew I wasn't his mom, but I'm just saying, be careful.
These kids are, are, are small, I don't think we're gonna be shoving them into any cars. I mean, they're not like hopping in, like with their little backpacks, and, you know, they're, they're being walked in.
I mean, this was like a four-year-old or something.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, it was pretty alarming. All right, sorry.
That won't happen.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Landers.
Thank you. I wanna follow up on the circulation question. It was helpful to hear your discussion of the outreach to the, to the property next door, which, I should say, I mean, it's years ago, we, we were there, it's, I don't think it's an ex parte disclosure, but we're former first-class family, I have no idea how they run that up, that facility now, other than what I could find online, but I do remember that they had direction requirements in the morning and the afternoon. They wanted the pickup to come off of eighteen. They wanted the pickup to come off of Eighteenth, go west, and then you would go west through the alley and turn left to go to the light and go wherever you were going. So they picked a direction. Did your, in your conversations, and I also want to note that your drop-off hours are different from what's on, what's publicly available on their website, is their, their hours of service. So I do recognize the staggering. It's a little tight around two thirty, two forty-five, but the four forty-five is clearly distinct. Eight thirty is going to be interesting for everybody. But I was wondering whether you had come to some understanding about directionality so that you didn't have vehicles moving opposite each other, doing competing drop-offs. Again, noting that most of these children are smaller than the front hood of a SUV.
Right. I'm going to actually let Kelsey, the operator, since she spoke to them. I will also say, though, that I think Peter D. addressed it, that this is, we, we submitted a passenger loading operations plan. It does still have to go through and be fine-tuned with the help of mobility and during our plan check process and of course with Kelsey's input as well. So it's still, I don't want to say moving target because that would be a pun, but I won't, someone do that. But I'm going to let Kelsey address it.
Ouch.
Yes. Hi, everyone. I did talk to Kim. I've been trying to talk to her for the last couple of weeks, and today she called me. And we were discussing this. She does have a direction and obviously we can't go in opposite directions, right? So we would have to coordinate in the same direction. Ideally, obviously, we want to focus primarily in eight to eight thirty, or even if we have to start before, I'm happy to work with her and the neighbors and start at seven forty-five. Some of our families start at eight, so I don't think it's undoable to start a little bit earlier so that there is less stagger time. And we did propose in the beginning to have two loading zones in the front, but they told us that we could only have one, so my idea was to focus on the front while she was focused on the back. So, you know.
Yeah, I, I worry about, you know, people and our, people sort of trying to overtake each other, trying to get to one drop-off. So I hope you'll be able to resolve that. Let me ask you also about the outdoor activity issue on the weekends. I appreciate the clarification. Ms. Steinberg, in your, in your presentation, I don't see it reflected in the current draft STOA about the requirement for greeters to bring the kids out of the cars, and that should probably be there. So going, but going to the outdoor issues, with respect to the parties that you were operating and have stopped, were you using amplified, was there amplification outside at the time?
There was.
There was, okay. What led you to the decision not to use the outdoor space even without amplification during the weekends?
It was a request from the neighbors. So honestly, before the pandemic, we were doing birthday parties only indoors. We were never doing them outside, but as we all know, you know, it's, it was very complicated to do anything inside. And, you know, we had to survive and the birthday parties were helping us. So we started doing parties outside. And, you know, we heard their concerns and we stopped doing them outside. First, we tried to limit the time and then we stopped. So we went back to doing some alterations inside just to try to get the space to allow to do some events again back inside.
Given, you know, our recent experiences with the pandemic, I'm, as, I am sensitive to the noise issues and don't want to provide a noise issue for the neighbors, but Jams is a block away. There's nothing to stop a house from having a birthday party with screaming kids in the backyard on private property, residential property. If there were a way for you to have the ability to use the outdoor space, is that flexibility that you would want and that you think you could control in a way that doesn't disturb the neighbors without amplification?
Yeah, we stopped doing amplification initially, so definitely, and I'm happy to. I've been in conversations and we provide our cell phone so that they can call us if at some point there is a noise or something that is disturbing them, so that we stop. So they have all the, the phone, the phone, the contacts of the teachers at work during the weekend so that if there is any concern, we can immediately stop. So, you know, we're working to, we clearly don't want anyone to be upset, neither to disturb, and we understand that, you know, it's a weekend and they want peace and they want to enjoy their weekend. So definitely, there is no amplification anymore, neither during the week, actually. You know, we try to keep it to play and regular voices from the teachers.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions right now? We're not seeing any questions right now, but Jill will get three minutes to respond to public testimony as well as any further questions we have. So that brings us to public comment, and I have, I think, twelve chits in front of me, and I'll name off three of them, and if folks could come up and kind of queue up to the right. We're going to get two, two minutes to speak each tonight. And I'm going to apologize upfront if I butcher your name, but I'm going to start with, it looks like Mario Tardan, Jessica Stromberg, and last name looks like Littleton to me. So if we get Mario first.
Hi, everybody. Hi, my name is Mario. Thank you for this time. I'm here to support Big, Big and Tiny. I have been part of the family for over four, five years now, and I strongly support and their petition. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not aware of the.
It's a conditional use permit.
Yes, there's CUP, CUP, right? Yeah.
Yes.
So yes, thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Jessica?
Hello, everybody. I'm Jessica. Also, yes, thank you for your time. I'm the director at Big and Tiny, and I've been working close with Kelsey since she opened in two thousand eighteen. And I fully support this request for Big and Tiny so that we can continue to be there for families and help all the children in need for childcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Littleton?
My name is Anjali. I support this CUP. I think it's a great idea. Childcare is always needed. And with the approval of this, we can help not only families who, you know, can have the luxury of working not in an office space, but those who have to go in somewhere else. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Next three speakers will be Ellen Martinez, Michael Geller, and it looks like Tyzok Campus. So again, Ellen Martinez, Michael Geller.
Sorry, again, I'm husband with Elena Martinez. He had to leave because he, he had some personal issue.
Okay, thank you very much for letting us know. We appreciate it. So, Michael Geller.
Good evening, Commissioners. Michael Geller. I am the majority owner of the limited liability company that owns this property. I signed a lease with Kelsey in two thousand eighteen. She came to me with a business plan, and it was a full startup. My partners and I had several choices of, of businesses that were willing to lease the space, but we believed in Kelsey and her plan, and we liked the, the fit with the neighborhood on the childcare. And when she unveiled to me the, the educational programs that kids, you know, one, two, three years were receiving, I was pretty astounded that this is a good way for our community to, to invoke on, on, on young kids. So we, we signed the lease and she's lived up to everything that she has ever promised in, in the documentation. Has really done a good job in that facility. It's my understanding that if Big and Tiny were to just simply reduce the frontage to less than forty feet, we wouldn't be here today. She can be doing all the things that she wants to do without condition. You know, during my ownership of the property, I found it can be challenging to have the right tenant in a commercial building that abuts a residential area. And, and we've, we've given real good consideration to who we want to put in the space and make sure it does work with the neighbors. If she did scale back to less than forty feet, then I go out and find another tenant. I get a restaurant. I got plenty of noise for the neighborhood. I got plenty of trash. I got bugs. I got rats. You know, whatever, whatever comes with a restaurant. I've got potentially evening operations. I think allowing Big and Tiny to expand. Do is simply a much better way for this, this to.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate. Appreciate your words. Okay, I have Tyzok Campus. And the next name would be a Carina, looks like Carina Warm, and Giovanni.
Hi, my name is Tyzok Campus. I am the manager of the apartment building right next door. I've been doing it for about nine years. We have about thirty-six units that are buttons up right next to it. It's about forty-six residents, sixteen parking spots, thirty-two cars overall, both sides. That's the max capacity. We're completely opposed to it for a few reasons. I personally receive as a manager there, besides my other ten other properties, about eleven calls on average about parking. It's a big challenge. It's great to see they're going to do something about it, but my, my biggest challenges are, one, it lines up to the driveway on one side, and we have parents in a rush to get in, get the kid out, walk him over, and then get back in the car. The problem is that they're either blocking a tenant, blocking the driveway, parking the red zone right in front so they can't get out. So in general, they're just making it very difficult for the tenants to go in and out. That's just the front side. The backside already has an issue because of the school, first school. From about seven thirty to about eight forty-five, there's a line going out onto Eighteenth Street. So you're going to see parents lined up already there, which is about seven to eight cars deep for about a half an hour until the school opens up, which I think is about somewhere between seven forty-five and eight. So that's challenged. So half my tenants on the backside have to go to the, exit the east side of the alley. As far as the noise, I'm glad they, they definitely did address the noise, the, the microphone, whatever was going on. It was very frustrating for us because I would get constant complaints. We have about eighteen residents on that side of the building, and it was just constant weekends, up to about five, six o'clock at nighttime, really mornings. This is one tenant in particular.
Okay, that's your time. So if you can wrap up your last thought.
Other issue is privacy. The balcony overlooks this new planned space, and I can't control that. We've already had sex offenders in that area, so my concern is I can't control a tenant's going to be possibly naked or nude, whatever, on his private balcony that he rents in sunbathing that overlooks his patio. So throwing that out there.
Okay.
I can't hold that.
Okay, hold on. I think we have at least one question for you.
Don't leave. I just wanted to ask you if you had any, you were, you said you had a list of objections. Have you completed that list?
I have a list of what?
Your list. Your list was parking and circulation. You, you, you mentioned the privacy from the balconies. Do you have other issues that you want us to consider?
Other ones were, were noise issues. Obviously, being, there's a kindergarten school right next door. We already get noise. But most of it's, you know, the cleaners come at six AM, six to six thirty, and they start cleaning up everything there. That's only going to expand. Now they're increasing the amount of kids. It's going to get worse. And we're already having trouble renting the units that are right next to it. That pretty much covers the majority of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Right. Okay, we have one more question for you, sir.
Sorry.
We have one more question for you over here.
Sorry. Can you just clarify the point you made about cars queuing in the alley? Which direction were, were they queuing up into the alley from?
Okay, yeah, so there's Seventeenth, Eighteenth Street.
Right.
So right behind Boulevard, they line up along the street and they come in this way. And then, so you have the, the cars lining up all the way up to the second property, which is the school, and then they offload right there.
And that street you're referring to is Eighteenth Street or Seventeenth Street?
That's coming in from Eighteenth Street.
Got it.
Going to Seventeenth Street.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
But you're, you're, just to make sure I understand this, you're west of those locations, correct?
I, I, what they didn't show in the images, which I was trying to figure out what they were planning to do, I just see a four-foot open space, space, is that balcony is ten feet up and it looks right over it.
Right, but, but I guess what I'm saying is you come down, they're going to come in eighteen, go down the alley. They drop off here, your building's to the, to the west of that, correct?
Right.
Okay.
It's one.
And you're still saying that people are blocking, blocking that alleyway, your, your tenants backing out there?
Yep.
Thank you. And then we should, we're just, we got more questions.
Just to clarify, so we're everybody's on the same page. My understanding is that what hap, is this correct? Parents awaiting pickup who arrive early will pull for, what is for them forward of the preschool property may or may not block, your tenants have to back out of their parking to get into the alley, if I, if I remember correctly.
Right.
Right. I don't know if that's tandem parking or single-spot parking, but they have to back out and make a, the half a three-point turn, right, to, to get into the alley. But what I hear you saying, tell me if this is correct, is that people pull forward of the property to wait for class to end and the kids to be brought. So they're just sitting in the alley, idling their car, turned off their car, waiting for a child to be shoved into their backseat, as happened to Commissioner Fresco. Is that fair statement?
Right, and a lot, and the challenge for a lot of the parents in, or sorry, tenants in front is it's really hard to back out on that congested street already. So even backing out is a mission to get out and go to work. So if it's the morning, then when they come in, that's when you get the complaints.
Because they're just zooming by those, and there's no space to, to back out?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Appreciate it. I think we're done with you this time. Carina, followed by Giovanni.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carina Warm. We're basically part of the Big and Tiny family since two thousand nineteen. And what I mean by that is, we can't hear, sorry, I have a very soft spoken voice. My family's been part of the Big and Tiny family since two thousand nineteen. And what I mean by that is that our two children have been going to Big and Tiny since two thousand nineteen. Our son Luca started initially. He's now at Grand School just around the corner. And we currently still have our daughter Luna, who's two years old, at Big and Tiny. We live locally on Twentieth Street, and we can walk to Big and Tiny. We're really grateful for all the support we've received from them, and we are fortunate to live in this little bubble that we operate and we can drop off our son at Grand School and then drop off Luna in walking at Big and Tiny. I also work from Big and Tiny, which has been a huge help to my own business. And we're, as a family, very much in support of their application. And we are, as I said, truly grateful for all the support we received and for the fact that they exist. We believe Kelsey is a true innovator in her field. She's forward-thinking. The programming at Big and Tiny is wonderful. There's creative output and musical programming, and our children have thrived. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Giovanni's coming up, and then the next three speakers would be Ramesh, Mitchell Lester, and Cindy A. Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Giovanni Piacentini, and I'm Kelsey's husband. So needless to say, I'm very emotionally involved in this project. I've seen it prosper from the very beginning. I've seen this community grow and thrive. A few of you mentioned businesses that are close by. Commissioner Lambert mentioned Time Cafe. I get my rep as at Boulevard. Our community gets their coffee. They love coffee. We love all of the businesses that are around us, and I've seen this community grow. I don't need to tell you how important childcare is. You already know that. What I will say is that I'm also a neighbor in my area, and sometimes I'm also concerned about noise, and I'm also concerned about traffic. So I think it's very important for everyone to understand that we're more than willing to talk to the neighbors and to work with them to make sure that they don't, that we hear their concerns and that their concerns are, you know, taken care of and that we come to an agreement, both as a, someone that's very involved in this project, but also is a neighbor and wouldn't want to have to worry about issues like parking or noise or anything else. So I thank you for your time and thank you for considering this application.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I'm Ramesh. I live right behind the alley where Big and Tiny is. So I wanted to raise actually like four issues. One is related to the noise disturbance. It's especially the parties that's happening on the weekends and also the other time it disturbs us. We can't use our backyard. We can't have a normal conversation with people, like with our family, with our kids. So I think that, that's one of the pain points. Then the second with the traffic congestion is right now, the way it is operating, the, it's a co-working space. The, the parents can come at any time, drop them off. a coworking space. The parents can come at any time, drop them off and go. It's flexible schedule. What they're proposing right now is to go to fifty-five, which is like double the size, and also there's a fixed time of fifteen, fifteen minutes for like a ten families to drop off their kids and go. I raise my kids. I know it's impossible for me to get them on time and drop them off and leave, and you're talking about like fifteen, like ten families doing it in fifteen minutes and then pulling over. That's impossible. It's like, it's physically impossible to do it, and that's a plan that is proposed. And then the drop-off and pickup times, I think you should understand that right now the, the problem that's caused by the existing first, first school, that its alley is backed away, and I cannot get into a garage, and there are cars idling in front of my house, on the side of my house already. It is coming in both directions of Eighteenth, north-south and, and south, south-north, given that it's very pain point for us already, and this is going to make it worse. I, I think, I would like you, as all of you commissioners, to consider traffic study, understand the impact. SMC is not in session right now once it starts. The traffic going to back up on Ocean Park, back up on the Eighteenth Street, the kids, you're going to be dropping, the kids are going to be getting dropped off at Will Rogers Jams. SMC, there's going to be in session. This is going to make it like infinitely worse. I would like you to consider, please, on the traffic study before you think about any kind of approval in this particular case.
Are you done with your statement? Because we have a question for you.
I have a couple of questions. Are you aware that they've agreed not to have the parties on the weekend outdoors? Won't that solve your problem? They'll be inside?
Right now, the way it is, there's no staff on site during the party time?
That's not what we understood. No, they have staff on site.
I think we can ask about how they did it, because all we were given was a phone number for somebody to call. That person is not on site. And is that, I think the part would be, if this is what you agreed, I never have to call them, right? But why do I have to call, and then my kids have to complain that there's a noise?
My question was, you understand that I'm not going to be having parties outdoors? It'll all be inside without amplified music? So do you think there'll be a sound impact, given that?
It's, it sounds good on paper, but I think people normally go, come in and out, there's going to be always noise, and it is going to disturb us.
Do you have an alley behind your house?
Yes.
Is that, can you use that for access and egress?
I, the alley over there is more like a trash, to put it out there.
Well, yeah.
But I think we have a, we have a study room right there, right next to the alley, and that's one of the things that's used for like a study space for our kids, and I use it.
Is your garage on the alley?
My garage is facing the Eighteenth Street.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mitchell, and Cindy, and Sarah.
Hi, my name is Mitchell Lester. It's great to talk in front of you. I never really talked to a planning commissioner, so it's great to be here. I do think you guys do a great job. You got a lot of challenges in front of you. I think you handle them pretty well. Yeah, so I want to echo what a lot of people have said, what even some of the commissioners have asked. I live right there, and I see the first school traffic that happens every morning, and it does wind around Eighteenth Street. Usually it does go seven, eight cars deep. Sometimes it does block the other side of the street. You have people doing U-turns to get in their position and everything. And, you know, I don't like it, but I've never really said anything, because I said, but, you know, it's a daycare. They're trying to deal the best they can. These kids need, you know, help, et cetera. But when I got the blue card saying that you're going to add, or there's a plan to add another fifty-five kids to that process, that frankly got my attention and was a big flag for me, and now I'm hearing more details where you're going to put forty-one cars, additional cars out there, and also it sounds like you can't both go down the alley. So now everyone, first school and Big and Tiny are all going to line up down Eighteenth or wind around Main or something, and they're trying to maintain a schedule that you have to drop your kid at a certain time. But now they're sharing spaces with first school. It seems like you're just walking into a massive problem here that's even worse than what we, you know, sort of see right now. So, so I don't know how, you know, if a traffic study, like he suggested is the right way to go or something, but just allowing this to proceed, it seems like you really are walking into a, and it's dangerous. There's a lot of people walking around. Not only is it the kids, it's the pedestrians, it's, you know, the school folks at jams and everything else. So, you know, keep that in mind whenever you're thinking about this project, because it already is very congested at that time. This is going to make it much, much worse. So thank you for your time.
Okay, we have a couple of questions for you. Commissioner Lambert first.
My understanding was the total number of kids is fifty-five. What's the net increase? It's not more, fifty-five more. It's the total of fifty-five.
I think first school is for sixty-three.
No, this is not, we're not talking about first school. We're talking about Big and Tiny.
Yes, fifty-five plus sixty-three for first school.
We're not talking about first school. Tonight before is Big and Tiny, and they will have a capacity of fifty-five kids, which is not new kids. There's like a net increase, and I can't remember what that is. Twenty? Okay. So right now, there are thirty-five.
They're not all scheduled to show up at the same time, though, right? I mean.
You know, I'm just telling you the numbers. We're not talking about fifty-five additional kids.
Right, but I'm talking about the number of kids that are coming to the school in the mornings. Fifty-five kids, forty-one cars? No? Is that correct?
What's your solution?
I'm not a planning commissioner, so I don't really know, but I wouldn't let it go through. I mean, I would not allow another forty-one cars to come through that area at that time. I think you could increase the number of people that have to walk. Maybe you limit the number of cars to like ten out of forty-one that have to come. I mean, it's maybe a pain for the parents to have to park in different areas of the neighborhood and walk their kids over. And by the way, this forty-one, these forty-one cars are based on if twenty-five percent agree they're going to walk to school, which also is an assumption that they're not positive of either. So, yeah, it's a challenge.
Great. Thank you very much. We have another question for you. Commissioner Lambert.
Hi, Mr. Lester.
Hello, how are you?
Nice to see you. So I, I've been asking the questions about the circulation, and, you know, I'm very familiar with the circulation in that neighborhood. I'm wondering about the outside issues, because I think in your letter you wrote about, you know, not being able to hear yourself think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And just post-pandemic, I'm wary of limiting all outdoor use, because, so what I'm wondering is whether you could live with, like from your experience, and say if you can't, but a kind of, you know, the normal decibel limit for outdoor activity in the neighborhood, which, which is around sixty-five decibels in that part of town.
Yeah, and I didn't bring that part up in my comments, because I didn't realize it was all going to be indoors. I mean, certainly some outdoor, you know, activity is fine, and you write, you made a good point, that no one can stop a private resident from having a party at their house, even if it's a little loud. That's just life. Now, if I had a private party at my house every single weekend, I think my neighbors would be kind of upset about that and would not like that so much. Right. So, hey, look, I mean, some, I'm all for some partying, or if they want, you know, ample, you know, keeping the noise down, not blaring music or not having microphones, it's just kids like out there chattering, you know, sure, absolutely. And if it's controlled in some way where it's not, you know, loud every single weekend, just like you wouldn't expect from your neighbors, you know, that would be fine by me, too.
Okay. And would you, what would you think of a, what would you think of a process? We've done this, this is the, how the planning commission has approached some of these risky, sort of on-the-edge issues where some leeway is granted to the operator, but there's a process in place where for a year or eighteen months, staff monitors complaints, and if those complaints are, you know, consistent and excessive, it comes back to us and we can, you know, revise the CUP, that there's a, that there's a kind of probationary period to make sure that it's working the way everybody hopes it would. Would that be something that you would find helpful?
I think that'd be great. I wasn't sure if you got the CUP, then that was it, and then you just had it for life and you're done. So, I mean, I think that's a great idea for a lot of these issues that are going on, that having a little time would be good to examine. Yeah, twelve months, eighteen months, and then, and then get back together and see.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, next speaker. Thank you, Mr. Lester.
Good evening. I'm Cynthia Amor. Before my two minutes starts, I really think out of fairness, I need to understand what just happened here, because for, for, and I will say, Kelsey and I have been working on, on the preschool aspect of the property.
Ask your question, please.
But the, what is this application for? It's been an application for a preschool for Monday through Friday. That's what Mr. Eng's presentation said. Did we just have an amendment to that to apply for commercial parties that cost three thousand dollars on the weekends? Why are we, we can talk about indoor versus outdoor.
Okay, okay. It's now time for you to do your presentation. You're going to give your.
But what, is this, was, is it on the application Saturday and Sunday for operating hours? Or did we just change it? Did they just ask to change? I don't understand what the issue?
That's a question that we will answer in our discussion.
Okay, so my, until just five minutes ago, every application I've seen, every conversation I had is, this is an application to expand a preschool business on, and to operate Monday through Friday. So I sent my letter and pointed out that Saturday and Sundays are not business, operate, regular business hours, and so I believe now there's a request, oh, we would like it to be. These are parties, you can look it up on their website, on the events tab. These are not at all related to preschool, just because they're children. These are three thousand dollar bespoke parties that have nothing to do. They're a separate business. So I don't understand why we're talking, and it's not on the application to be licensed. So I don't know if the commission has seen the letter I wrote, but when I spoke with planning. So, am I on now? So what I prepared to speak on, now things have changed. It sounds like I'm confused. But this is an application for a preschool on weekdays. Party business is not parties for the kids that go there. You could look on the website. It's, it's, they want to do bar mitzvahs. They're, they're using it for an entertainment business, almost as if it were a lounge or, or a restaurant, but it's not. So there's nothing addressing it. But there is, and we should not lump together childhood education with three thousand dollar parties for strangers and their parents that all come to these parties. I can answer questions about indoor use, but my first question is, why are we talking about a private party business, which is completely separate from the business that's on?
Thank you very much for your comments. Do we have any questions? We have no questions right now.
Hi there.
Sarah.
I'm Sarah Trope. I sent an email that said what I think, but first off, I just would like to say that it is loud, and it is not, they're not always compliant with what they say. I do appreciate the efforts they've made, but it is not, it's not, not intrusive and then beyond intrusive to many of us who live close by. Secondarily, their plan for a drop-off is completely untenable. I live there. I watch it. I video it when it's the existing preschool there and how far it is. And, you know, yeah, I bought there. I knew that there was a preschool there. I didn't know there'd be a second one that would require fifty, you're saying not fifty additional, but thirty additional kids being dropped off at the same time, and it's just not, it's not going to work. And I do worry about, as planned, if it's in opposing directions, I don't know how they get out on the Eighteenth when their kids getting dropped off and walked their little hands into, into the first school with cars now having to go past them. I mean, it's just not, not tenable. So before it's, I mean, I'm not against preschools. I have two kids who went to preschools, and I personally parked and walked, because that's the way I had to do it at my school. So I would suggest they think about that if they want to do it. And I would suggest that this commission needs to have a, some sort of study of, of traffic impacts before you okay this, because it's that school, there's a jam craziness, parents drive, I mean, we already had to have stop signs put in on Eighteenth, two different spots, in order to deal with the crazy jam drops off, drop-off. And SMC is soon to be opening again in full, and it's, you know, we love our spot, but it is a crazy spot in the neighborhood for excessive traffic, and the addition of these folks is going to just make it that much worse. So.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. We have at least one question for you. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Trope. Nice to see you. I just wanted to ask you the same question that I'd asked about the outdoor, the outdoor noise. Could you say a little bit more about the, about the compliance issues? Because I'm not sure, I'm, yeah, just say a little bit more about the compliance issues.
Well, I mean, you know, I think they may actually want to comply, but you, there's limitation to what you can do to control a party of, you know, twenty kids and therefore forty adults, because you know, you know what it's like when you go to birthday parties when your kids are under five. Both parents go. It's a social event for the parents, not for the kids, really. And that's loud. You just have that many people. It's loud. And even when it's inside, that can be that way. And I, frankly, as Cindy indicated, I do not understand why that is even a topic, given that this is a childcare facility that's seeking to run a childcare, you know, to run a childcare preschool, not a place that is charging three thousand dollars for privately held birthday parties. Those are, that's not the same business. I don't understand how that is, and if that's the case, then you definitely need to punt this down the line, because none of the neighbors understood that that's what you were working to improve.
Right. And if you, now, what if they wanted to offer their Monday through Friday childcare services on the weekend?
I mean, is that what a preschool, I don't know. I mean, in my mind, preschool is Monday through Friday, and if you're going to choose to do it otherwise, then you need to put that on the permit.
Right.
And we, the neighbors need to have that time to, to let that be known, you know?
No, I guess what I'm asking is, what's your experience with, with, say, outdoor noise from the existing childcare site during, during the, during the regular, their regular operating? Like, what's your?
When they're just being preschoolers and.
Yeah.
That's, and that's actually not even annoying. It's beautiful to hear the sound of little kids. I have teenagers now, so I, I don't mind that.
Right.
But, you know, that's a different thing than forty adults, and, you know, some, and this they can't control, but some of them, when you've asked them to be quieter, have been downright disrespectful to some of these neighbors. So, you know, it's, you know, I don't expect a hundred percent peace and quiet. That's not realistic, and I don't, that's not what any of us want, and we don't mind the childcare. And the sound of the kids is actually kind of charming, but it's, this is, this is not that. And again, the idea that a three thousand dollar birthday party is being shoehorned into an application for a childcare center is frankly very frustrating to those of us who have been trying to engage on this issue in a good neighborly way for the last several months.
Okay. And then last question. I have not seen, so I'd like to know what your source is. I haven't, I don't remember seeing, sorry, I haven't seen, so where did you, what's your source for the bidirectional drop-off pickup?
I saw that in the application, and, you know, maybe I didn't get the most recent one, because clearly something happened since I last saw it, and now it's, you know, now we're looking at something that's different. But that's what I read, that it was to be coming off of Eighteenth, excuse me, off of Seventeenth and dropping off. I think Kelsey even said that when, that she initially had that, but then when she spoke today to Kim, the first school one that they contemplated actually doing it the other way.
It's now changed.
So I don't, I don't think I saw that incorrectly.
Thank you.
Hold on a second. We have one more question.
I, I'm very confused myself. My understanding is that there have been birthday parties in the past at Big and Tiny. Is that correct?
There have been, yes.
And they've been outside and inside, and now they're saying they're going to keep them inside. So that's not a new development. That's not part of the CUP?
I'm saying, no, that, you're right, but that's not the app, I mean, at least as I understand.
The application's for expansion of the childcare.
Yes, childcare. But I mean, I, they didn't do birthday parties always. That was not that, as I understand.
But they have done them in the past, that's the point.
They did it, as I understand it.
So this is not an additional service.
As I, I don't, as I understand it, that was a, something they did in order to.
Subsidize.
Deal with the fact that COVID happened. And I, you know, I'm sympathetic to that.
What was to subsidize childcare? Because I.
Because of COVID, not, you know.
So this is not a, my point is, this has happened before. This is not a new thing that they're proposing. They're just proposing to go indoors. Is that your understanding?
Well, she's saying that, yeah, she's going to do it now indoors. But I mean, it wasn't always there. Big and Tiny existed for a while without doing any birthday parties.
Okay, but the point is, they've done them in the past.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Commissioner, we have a little business. We got a late chat, and we need a vote to allow it to be, to the speaker to speak for a minute. So if we.
I would move to accept that.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded. If we can, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Jake, if you're still here, you get, you get a minute to speak on the, on this issue.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time. Thank you for allowing this session to happen. It's actually very informative to hear all the angles of this otherwise very complex issue. My daughter goes to Big and Tiny, and the first thank you I just wanted to give is to Kelsey, the founder. This is a staple of our community. It's a safe space for my daughter and other children in the community. And as a entrepreneur myself, it is a vital aspect of my daily operation, my daily life. So I'm so thankful that that business exists. And the second thank you I want to give is to the property owner. I'm so thankful that you chose Kelsey as your tenant, because to those who are in opposition, I mean, I can just imagine if you, if it was a nightclub or if it was a bar, I mean, can just imagine if you, if it was a nightclub, or if it was a bar, I mean, I can only imagine the kind of tenor and noise disturbance that they might experience then. So I'm in full support of the CUP being approved, and I'm so thankful to Kelsey for this business. Thank you.
Thank you, nice timing. Okay, we've heard now from the public, we have no more speakers, it's now back to the applicant, they get three minutes to respond to any comments, and then answer questions that we might have. Okay, hold on a sec, there you go, got to get that light turned on, yes.
Thank goodness, okay. So I think obviously First School exists there, and I think it's hard to determine exactly the, the impacts of the existing preschool there. I think a lot of the problem comes from that. We've, we've worked with them, we've talked to them, and in fact, we've even suggested going ahead and asking them to request on, let's see, a passenger loading space on Ocean Park in front of their facility, so that they can hopefully mitigate some of their problems that, that's been created, as far as traffic goes in that area too. I'm hoping that they'll go ahead and do that, I think it would ease up a lot of problems for everybody. We're only allowed, I think, as you all know, to ask for one offsite loading space, that's why we did that. Initially, we wanted two, we were told by staff that, that that is impossible, but, but if First School asks for one, that would be terrific. So that is something that we've actually been working for. I'm sorry, I don't know anything about directional, that has never been discussed in any of our, any of our operation plans. I know Kelsey can, can talk about it, but she has had discussions with First School about the directions the traffic was going to flow, but they've just been preliminary, and there's, you know, obviously, we have to coordinate that. So I would just like to, again, say, the only reason we're here is because of this expansion. If, if, if we can't do this, it will be rented to somebody else, and all of these conditions and neighborhood protections and conditions we've agreed to will not be there. So they can do whatever they want, they can, they can have it open seven days a week, they can have it open till 11:00 PM, 12:00 PM, so, and they don't have any parking. So I'm just, you know, I hope that we can come to some sort of agreement, but I can only emphasize the, the need for childcare and the very thin margins that these things are on. So I'll let Kelsey talk.
Thank you. I just want to say that I care about these families and what we've built, and the reason why we're doing this is because families has asked, that some of them need the flexibility to leave and not stay in that space. I do think that many of them will continue to come and spend time, and they'll park, and they'll come and see us, because they're used to being there and being welcome in that community. I think it's, I heard about having some kind of like period of testing to see if this works. Mike has been the best landlord ever, he's given me like break in, in price, in everything to make this dream come true. And in this process, we're spending money in construction, in fire sprinklers, in alarm, it's going to be very, very expensive. So I need this to happen, I need this to have a security. I'm going to
Kind of lead with more extension of five to 10 years, so in order for us to continue and operate, we need this plan to be successful and really.
Okay, okay. Your, your time has run, run out, we appreciate your comments, we do have questions for both of you. So I'm going to start again at the far right with Commissioner Fonda Minardi.
Yeah, is there a loading space in front of your facility now?
No, there's not, it's metered parking.
Okay. And did I understand that chart correctly, that you expect half the load to come from the alley and half from the street?
Correct, that is correct.
So in effect, what's happened, we're not really increasing the alley load if we're using that front space in the street as an effective way of dividing the load in half.
That is good math, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Landers?
I'm sort of trying to understand, the, the first thing I want to ask is, there's just some, what is your plan for the events on the weekends, whether they're parties or something else? Just, can you, it, there's some confusion, what is it that you want to be able to do? Who's going to be running it? And will there be Big and Tiny staff on premises at all times?
There is always Big and Tiny premises, there has not been one party without Big and Tiny, because we're liable for the space, responsible, so there is always, and I think what the neighbors meant is that sometimes we give them the director phone, because we have different staff and we can't give all the teachers' numbers, we don't know who is going to work that weekend, so there is one contact person, and maybe that day, that contact person wasn't on site, doesn't mean, there is always two people from the staff on weekends during the birthday parties. Birthday parties is not my priority. Birthday parties is what makes me pay for the CUP, what makes me pay for the construction that I have to go through. Eventually, once we get to capacity, I don't want to continue birthday parties. It's a lot of work, it's stressful, it makes me stay five, seven days a week pending and working. I want to have capacity, I have to, I want to have the school full of kids, and in order to get there, I need to do some birthday parties. It's not my priority. I'm okay in doing them indoors, of course, we are going through a pandemic, so it's not easy, and some clients who say, I'm going to pass, I'm not going to reserve your space, because they see the beautiful patio, and everybody wants to utilize patio as a part, and I would want to throw a party outside as well. So again, it's, you know, it's not ideal, but I'm hoping to like compromise here, do them inside, we'll have less, that's okay. Eventually, my priority is just focus during the week to in childcare. We have done childcare on the weekends, and that's a possibility as well, you know, eventually, if, if that's something that the parents need, but it's really not my focus.
So would you be open, I have, I've expressed my concerns about the circulation, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to ask you about that now, because I think it's a longer conversation, but would you be open to limiting the number, to, to having a bit more flexibility on the use of the outdoor space if you had a noise ordinance decibel limit, number one, on the use of the space, number one, and number two, a limit on the number of children and adults who could be in that patio at any given time?
Yes.
You would be open to that?
For the, for the weekends, obviously.
For the weekends, but, and what would, and this is a question for staff, while they're up here, if they chose to operate their childcare facility on the weekends, because that's initially what I thought was sort of going to happen, because I didn't realize that the co-working space was going away, and in all candor, I thought, oh, that's interesting, people work on their startups 24/7, they need to go to work on a Saturday, and they want to go in and have people look after their kids. What are the, what would their rights be under a STOWA to run their childcare program on the weekends? If they chose to go into that line of business? Can they?
They might want to.
What, they might not want to now, but they, they might want to when they drop the birthday parties. I'd like, I, we're going to do this hopefully once, so I'm just curious what, I don't want to impose a limit.
Let, let's staff
That's my question.
Let's staff digest this. Let's ask, let's ask the applicant and the representative the questions right now, and get them
Okay.
Back to their seats, and then we can hear from staff.
Sounds good.
Okay. Do we have other questions right now of Commissioner, Commissioner Lambert?
A theoretical one, based on what you said, that if, that basically you're doing the events to help pay for the construction, is that correct?
Construction, and while we increase that capacity that, that we need.
And I don't want to cut off your ability to do events, but if at some point in the future, you said you didn't particularly care for doing them anyway, would you be willing to set a time where that stopped happening?
Well, maybe instead of time, it's something where, you know, once we reach capacity, I, I can, you know, stop doing parties, yes.
So if we stipulated that in the STOWA, is that realistic? I don't want to, I don't want to cut off
For me, yes, for me, yes.
I'm asking her if that works for her.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I believe Vice Chair Raskin, you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question, so forgive me, but am I correct in understanding that you're not doing patio events during weekdays?
No, we only do events during weekends. An example, this weekend, there is only one, and it's two hours, so to be here, people may be thinking that we're having six birthday parties a weekend, there might be weekends that are like a little bit more, but some example is two hours this weekend.
Yeah, okay.
And it's going to be indoors.
Okay, so condition number eight, as it's written now, says in the last sentence, special events on weekends shall be restricted to indoors only between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Would you be okay with a condition that said that special events on all days of the week would, will be indoors?
But the problem will be that they're operational, they're on weekdays, right? And so how do we, how do you determine what is a special event? I mean, they're, they're just providing daycare. I don't know how you would discern what would be an event, a child's, you know, but they're usually utilizing the outdoor space, right, because we have to, per the code, by the state code. So the kids are going to be coming in and out, and so there's no space to have special events
Yeah, we don't do especially
On Monday through Friday, because there's kids there, so there's no special events on Mondays through Fridays.
Okay.
So that's, that's why it's limited only to the weekend.
So we have, we have actually press and staff, I don't know if we can find the language, we actually have some precedent on this, we dealt with this with the Rainbow Garden application. There was a long discussion about special events and the potential impact on the neighborhood, and I wonder if for our discussions, we could bring that language back up. What we did, if, please correct me if I'm misremembering, those of us who were here, is that we limited them to a certain number of special events over the course of the month and the year, and I believe we had, we had a number of exchanges about just try to, trying to make it manageable for the neighborhood, and I wonder whether that might be, might be an approach, it might not be the right approach, but I, I, you know, trying to avoid, you know, I'd love to be consistent with what we've done in the past.
Well, just to close the loop with my last question, I mean, if you're representing that you're not doing special events on weekdays, I, I'm still struggling to understand what the problem is with memorializing a condition of approval that says you won't do them on weekdays.
Yeah, as long as we can actually discern what is a special event is, and what are just kids going out to play in the, in that playground and singing happy, what if, what if one of them has a birthday? I mean, I, you know, they're not helping, they're in a party for them, because it's an actual workday, but, I mean, I, you know, if you can come up with it.
The question is, I don't think it was ever an issue of the weekdays, I think here the concern of the neighbors is about the weekends and the noise, which I, for what I've heard, like, I don't think there has been any concerns about doing them indoors, am I correct?
Wait, 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 we're not having a discussion with you and, and the folks in the staff. We are trying to ask questions.
So here is the proof, I've been doing birthday parties since the day I opened in 2018, okay? And actually, I was doing so many birthday parties before the pandemic, that's how we started the business running. So I was doing up to four and five birthday parties on the week, each weekend, and as you can tell, like, the neighbors didn't even know.
I did.
Okay. Please talk to us.
So my point is, I don't think indoors is really causing any problem, there is no dropping off, there is no parents' party, they come in, they have a two-hour birthday party indoors, and then they leave. I don't think that should be a problem with the neighbors, but again,
Okay.
I'm happy to, if you have restriction of numbers, or based on my capacity, once I reach my capacity, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, we hear you, loud and clear, thank you very much.
I just reposed my idea.
You can ask your question.
Okay. I said earlier, rather than restrict the number, because I'm not even sure what that would be, would you be amenable to actually stopping special events on weekends once you reach stability?
She just said yes.
She said yes, okay, so rather than setting a number of three per month, or whatever the heck, doing it that way, okay.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more questions for you right now, so I'm going to ask you to take your seats.
Thank you.
We're going to close the public hearing for now, and we are going to turn to the Commission for Discussion and Questions of Staff. So staff, if you could enlighten us about the, the use of the facility for birthday parties on the weekend, and how that does or doesn't impact their request, is it a use permitted by right, or is it something that has to be covered in the conditional use permit? And then talk to us a little bit about the next steps on their transit plan.
The way the, the draft conditions in the Statement of Official Action discuss the hours for outdoor, or excuse me, for events on the weekend, this commission could choose to limit them further. We do believe that when we approach this component of their operational plan that they submitted with their CUP, we always viewed that request as being
I'm going to stop you really quick, you're saying that this was part of their operational plan from the beginning of their application?
Yes.
Thank you.
But we viewed that component as being ancillary and accessory to the use. If this commission believes that there needs to be some qualifications or limitations on that, that's for your discussion, and we can memorialize that in a condition, and there, there probably, that potentially could be restricted as well, and so that's not, you know, that's, staff made a recommendation, this commission can obviously change that component, or propose it, and
I think the bigger concern, at least where I'm sitting, was, was this something that was just discussed tonight for the first time?
No, no, it was, it was contemplated. We have a condition addressing the activities on the weekend as a result of it being introduced through the application.
Thank you. And then, at least for my question, I like, is, talk to me again about what the next steps here on the, on the mobility plan and mobility review at this point.
So there, the, the draft plan was submitted with the application, and staff has been, mobility staff and planning staff have been working with the applicant on that. Our traditional process is, and some suggestions and direction have been incorporated into the draft plan. We would normally and always look at the plan in its finality during plan check, when there's changes being proposed, and we would do another final review at that, a final review at that stage.
Okay. With that, I'm going to let Commissioner Landers ask his questions.
So I, the sort of questions and comments that I would love, like to put in front of the commission, I think, as of right now, because of the circulation issues, I want to put my cards on the table and say, I can't make the findings. Without, this is, these are two child, and I, and I've done this before on other projects, and I'm prepared to be in the minority, I cannot make the findings on the safety in the alley, based on what I know right now. I believe those issues are resolvable, I believe I could make the findings if a plan were brought to us that actually laid out where the traffic was going to be and how it was going to be controlled, but that's where I am right now. The flip side of that is that I do think we're being too restrictive on the, on the use of the outdoor space post-pandemic, I'm going to be consistent on that, and I've suggested some language to staff, I would like to impose a decibel limit on the, on, for noise zone one, I looked what it is, it's basically 65 decibels, which is what we used at the Oceana at the alley property line. I also want to make sure that we're keeping the alley clear at all times, and that customer parking and loitering in the alley is prohibited, and I would like to limit the number of people allowed outside during the special events for no amplified music, no amplification, full stop, outside, ever, and that would be, but the, the noise, I would apply the noise to the whole thing, and I would limit it to 20 children and five adults outside at any time, which is a one to four, adult to child ratio, and would prevent like 40 parents and 20 kids from loading up in the outside patio, which is what would lead to kind of massive noise. If you have 20 kids running around in an afternoon birthday party with four or five staff, kind of making sure that they're safe, that's a very different proposition, and on principle, I feel strongly that we should not be limiting the use of outdoor space. I, I think we've learned from the last three years, and I just don't want to do it, but we can impose headcount limits, we can impose decibel limits, and I would like to put that in the STOWA, but the truth is, what I'd really like to do is continue this until we get an actual circulation plan that will leave me confident that, that kids and parents are all going to be safe on this alley, because it's, it's going to be a mess, from what I can tell.
Commissioner Lambert?
I, I really am not totally in agreement with that, I don't, honest, I mean, I think definitely we need a circulation plan, and that's why we have a mobility division. From what I'm hearing tonight, an awful lot of the problem is not being created by these people, it's being created by the preschool next door, and unless they're willing to participate in this, it's meaningless. And I don't know how we make them participate. These guys now are going to have two child loading areas, in the front and the back, the first school doesn't have one in the front, so it sounds to me like the alley issue is very much a first school issue. So it sounds to me like the alley issue is very much a first school issue. And how we get them on board, I don't really know. But I don't, I think these people should be penalized for a situation that they really are trying to ameliorate and are actually sort of mixed in with the people next door who aren't cooperating. So I really don't want to hold this up. But I do want to see a mobility plan by a mobility division, which is why they're there.
But you're saying, you're saying you don't want to hold it up. So you're just saying, make it a condition in the mobility expert, you know, the expertise of the mobility element.
Yes. And then somehow get first school's involvement. Because I mean, from what I'm hearing tonight, an awful lot of the traffic issue is because of first school, not these guys.
Yeah, but I think you're right. They have no skin in the game.
Right.
Right?
Right. I don't know how we do that.
Okay, let's go.
With respect to that last point, through this process, we will not be able to compel participation from a neighboring property regarding a parking and loading operations plan or any, any kind of operational restrictions or cooperation. We just simply can't.
Do they have a CUP?
No, they don't.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner, Vice Chair Raskin, please.
I don't have questions per se. I mean, Commissioner Landers, you've been a champion in our community for mobility, safety. And I, I'm kind of curious, what, what else are you looking for here? I mean, I'm, I'm sympathetic to you continuing this to refine this further. I'm just kind of, I'd like to get some more specificity as to what, what you're looking to get out of this.
I, I think Commissioner Lambert's raised a good point, which is that there is an existing problem in the neighborhood that is not something that we have any ability to regulate. The issue is that from, and, and there's an existing problem with the neighboring apartment building, right? With tenants who can't back out. And, and she's also correct that we shouldn't load, we shouldn't burden the applicant with those problems. The problem is that we shouldn't also exacerbate those conditions without an understanding of essentially how we're going to mitigate them. And it's one thing if you are in as, in an established, in one school community, right? So I'm, I'm thinking of unintended consequences. And I know that we can't, we can't prevent everything, right? Horrible things happen. But what I'm imagining is you have two, these two schools that are next to each other. If you're a first school parent, right? Existing one, right? And you're in that traffic line, you jump the line, you behave like a jerk, there is, there are consequences for you. You're going to get talked to, you're going to get, there's, there's going to be a social compact that says you don't jump the line. But if you're a parent who is at the other school and you perceive that it's the first school holding you up, or if you're at Big and, or if you're at first school and you think Big and Tiny is holding you up, some of that social compact doesn't exactly hold up. And that's, you know, there was this question about bidirectionality. And I'm really pleased to hear that there's now communication between the two, the two entities and that they're talking about sharing the same directional requirements. I would like to see, I, I actually, things that would help me, okay? Confirmation, even informally, that there is a unidirectional use of the alley, preferably from, I think it's been established that 18th to 17th is safer and you don't get more cars backed up in front of the apartment. And I think we could say that even independently of the other property because we wouldn't want this project to lead to loading in front of the apartment building. And if we flipped the direction, we would get there. So we don't even, first school need not exist for us to say we want to go from 18th to 17th. The second thing is the overlap. And again, it's a problem because they're not subject to our review. The overlap at 8:30 is a little bit problematic. And I do appreciate the, the flexibility of moving to a kind of an earlier drop time. The overlap at, there is no overlap at 4:45. First school kids, according to their current website, get picked up at four. We can only go with the information that we have at the moment, right? 2:30 to 2:45 to me is a little tight. So I'd love to see more time difference between the current pickup that we know exists in the alley at 2:30 and their proposed pickup. So for example, if their pickup went to three, that might, that might just reduce the likelihood of overlap. Nothing's stopping the first school from changing their hours of operation. But again, we can only deal with the information that we have available, publicly available to us at this time. Those are the, those are the things that I think would help. And obviously, the, 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 the front area loading. I'm, I'm skeptical of the front area loading. There's always a handful of parents who will drop their kids and walk in. But the minute you offer that alley drop-off with a greeter, as a parent, I'll tell you, we take it every time. Because somebody pulls our kid out of the car. I mean, well, people who are rushing to work, maybe people who have more time on their hands don't. But if you're rushing somewhere, it's an, it's, it's an easy solution. And that's when mistakes happen. And that's what I'm trying to, I'm just trying to avoid that, that overlap. So those things would help me.
If I, if I may just speak a little bit about process with respect to what the code reads with how passenger loading plans work for early, for childcare and early education facilities. So I'm reading from Municipal Code Section 9.31.120D. It does specify that the director actually does have ultimate approval over the parking and loading plan. So I did want to clarify that for the commission. Certainly, if there are conditions you would like to place in, on the CUP, but I, I just want to remind the commission that the municipal code is clear that the director actually has ultimate approval over the parking and loading plan.
Yes, as it should be.
Meaning, can I just ask a clarifying question? Meaning that we are limited in our, in the middle, meaning that, that we are limited in what conditions we can impose? Or meaning that we should give direction to staff or put something in the, in the conditions that would ask the director to ensure certain conditions are met?
Right, so exactly. So this is more of a process issue is what I'm trying to say. So certainly, the commission has its authority with respect to a CUP to place conditions on operations, right? And so if you have conditions you would like to see with respect to parking and loading that are related to the CUP, that fall within your jurisdiction, yes. But I did just want to make clear that the code makes clear that ultimate approval, because there could be additional, if I understand the policy behind it and the director can hop in or the manager can hop in, the, the idea is that even after the commission is, has issued its approval or not approval, but if you should issue an approval, there could be additional items that come up that might need refinement, which, which require an administrative review and require final administrative approval. So that's really the intent of what's going on. So it's not to say that you don't have authority to place parameters and to place conditions. It's just to remind you that ultimate approval of the plan rests with the director, and it generally happens after issuance of a CUP.
Could we, could we, and I, this, let me finish the thought. Could we either through a condition or through a direction, direct that whatever the PLOP ends up being, that it is consistent with current residential and commercial use of the, of the alley and the street, compatible with, consistent with, and maximizes, maximizes child safety and minimizes overlap with other uses? So that would give the director or the manager flexibility to say, we've got to be unidirectional because it's unidirectional at these hours. We've got to separate the, the traffic, right?
Sean, I got to stop you. I got to stop you, Sean. Because this is exactly what they're saying for us to do, is to give some parameters.
So can we do that?
Yes, that's what they're saying.
Great, okay.
You can provide the parameters. I, I think I'm, we will, I'm taking notes on some of the suggested points that you would want us to condition for, as direction in the review to consider unidirectional pickup and drop-off.
We're not done, we're not done, we're not done yet.
No, I know. I'm not saying that those are all of them. But I'm just saying, I'm, we are taking notes on that. But we do need to have the flexibility. And we will structure this, what is emerging as a draft condition so that ultimately, when it comes down to it, that, that our professional staff have the, as Heidi said, have the ultimate authority to review and approve that because we are going to be looking at it in more detail with the, with the qualification that this commission may provide for it. But it will rest with, with staff.
Understood, okay. I understand that Commissioner Fresco has been raising her hand. I do not need people chirping in my ear about it.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm sorry, I'm just kidding.
No, I'm not talking to you, Commissioner Fresco. Commissioner Fresco, go ahead.
I see this as so much more simple of a situation. And instead of thinking about how you can solve a problem. I mean, basically, the concept is, the cars drive by, they open the door, somebody pulls out the kid or puts the kid in, and they keep moving. So the idea is to just figure out how to keep them moving. Now, number one, I mean, I, my kids are old and gone, but I spent a lot of time in carpool lines. And one of the most successful ones that went really fast and picked up 1,200 kids in 30 minutes was one where the parents were not permitted to queue up, as some, one of the neighbors described, around 18th Street at all, until the carpool line started. And because it was a bigish school, I mean, this isn't nursery school, but still, it was a bigish place. There was a lot of traffic enforcement from the city around so that you couldn't like stand in a red zone anywhere near that school until it was time to pull in. You had to like make your stuff work and get there when the carpool line was moving and not before. And that was, and people did it, and it worked. So if we just focused on not letting people queue up, if both schools' lines are moving, then nobody is getting rude. Because another really important thing to know about carpool lines is that parents in carpool lines are at their meanest. So you, it's, so we just have to keep it moving. So the idea, I mean, I know we can't enforce things on first school, but the city is responsible for not letting cars line up in the roadway on 18th Street if they're not driving. I mean, that's where you're supposed to drive, not where you're supposed to park. So the neighbors have recourse with that to keep that moving. And then first school will say, hey, if you guys, word to my students, your, my parents, if you guys stop in the street, the city's going to give you a ticket. So don't do that anymore. So we can solve these things with the tools we have, and we don't have to condition these people out of business because of a carpool line. We can make it work. So I say that we design it on timing and we put it on the neighbors to make sure that if the city comes in and gets people out of the roadway if they're there when they shouldn't be. That's my suggestion.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Appreciate your patience. Commissioner Fonda-Martin.
Yeah, so I would like to second that. I think we have beat this idea to death. Fortunately, the director has the control over this. And there are staff members here. He has heard all the discussion. So everything that we have suggested is now cooking away in the brains of the traffic mobility people. So that's the first thing. Second thing is that we have a confluence of interest. The two schools do want the traffic to move. It's not like they're going to be, you know, trying to make it go slower and all that. And the last thing is that even though parents are at their meanest, they are not stupid. And when they figure out that there's much more parking available on the street than in the alley, that, those two sides of traffic are going to sort of balance out. Now, where that balance is, we can't really tell. But the, the net idea is that with that extra parking space that the city is giving up to benefit the flow of traffic, that's a big deal. That helps a lot in the mix here. So I think we don't have to micromanage this. I think we can let the natural approval forces do their work and the fact that two groups want to solve this. They're not going to fight to solve this. They want to solve it.
Thank you. Commissioner Tolkien.
Yeah.
Wait, can I may stop you real quick, though? Can you please move up closer to your mic? Because I, I know they can't hear you on TV sometimes.
I think we have a, you know, traffic problem. And we have to solve it by getting somebody who's really a consultant to look at this because it's complicated. It's, it's existing before the enlargement, and it's not been solved. And you, you're thinking, all right, the parents are going to solve the problem. The parents are not going to solve the problem. They're not capable of solving the problem. I don't know how we can condition it, but I think some analysis has to be done. Otherwise, the neighbors are going to, it's going to get worse.
Back to Commissioner Landers.
I have draft language. I would, based on what Commissioner Fresco said.
I'll have it up.
Okay. And I sent it, I don't know if we can put it up. But the PLOP shall maximize child safety and shall be compatible with existing circulation and entry egress patterns on Ocean Park Boulevard and Ocean Park Place. Ocean Park Place shall remain clear at all times, and customer parking or loitering on Ocean Park Place shall be prohibited. Customer queuing and double parking on 18th Street shall be prohibited.
Excellent. You should have done that an hour ago.
Didn't know what our authority was. If that's, if that's there, I'm, I'm prepared to move this forward. Well, I also have outdoor language. So I'd like to, I'll add that to my motion. But I also would like to generally provide that outdoor noise shall not exceed the decibel limit for noise zone one pursuant to Santa Monica Municipal Code 412060, which is effectively 65 decibels. At the alley property line, on use, on weekends, no more than 20 children and five adults shall be permitted to use the outdoor space for events.
Second. I have something to add.
I'll move, I'll move the staff report with those two languages if you want to add something. You want to make that.
I just want, this is not really, I'm not sure to go into that motion. But I just wanted to say that, I mean, I really think if first school had a Ocean Park Boulevard drop-off, it would help a lot. And if, I'm in a neighbor, if there's anything I could do to intercede, to talk to them with you guys, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay, do we have a, I heard a second. But I, I don't know, I know. But did you second the staff report with the STOAH plus this?
I seconded whatever Sean said.
I'm happy to have, let's say for the sake of argument, that I made, that I moved the staff report with my language for the PLOP and the circulation limits and the outside noise limit and remove the limitation on using the outdoor space for birthday parties.
Okay, so we have a first, we have a first and a second. And I have staff looking to do a clarification.
And I'll send that.
One of the, Commissioner Landers and others on the commission, one of the other items, substantive items that I had heard under discussion was the potential condition regarding the, the reporting back, providing the information to staff. That is authorized, you know, in, in the code associated with the CUP. So I wanted to check on that. It had been mentioned, but not included in your motion.
That, let's, yeah, I'd like to incorporate that into my motion. We can use the language that we used, I guess, for the Oceana or other projects. But I'd like to have a 18-month review period and start that review period from the time that they, from the time that they convert the space.
Get a CVO.
Get a CVO and start operating, yeah. Which is, I think, what we did on the Oceana as well.
Is that friendly?
Totally.
Okay. Okay, so now we're going to have some discussion while staff notes all this down. And I see Vice Chair Raskin.
Yeah. For the outdoor events, the applicant said that they're not doing them. Why not just make condition eight, say, special events shall be indoors Monday through Sunday, every day of the week?
Because on principle, after COVID, I don't want to, if, I just don't want to put that limitation on as long as we can control the noise level. I just, on principle, don't want to do that. They may, they, they're free not to use the outdoor space. It may be that the limits we put on the use of outdoor space are too onerous for them to actually comply with, so they won't. But I don't want to.
I don't think they want to do it.
I don't want to tie their hands.
Commissioner Fonda-Martin.
Yeah, so in that same spirit, if we have a decibel limit, why do we need a people limit?
Because the combination can get quite out of hand.
Well, I, I know. But our main concern is if they were having a yoga meditation and it was perfectly silent, but there was 26 people, who cares?
When you can teach four, when you can teach two and three-year-olds to do yoga meditation, you will be a zillionaire.
No, the point I, the point I'm making, I think one, one is enough. I think we should hands off on the number of people. The limitation of the, the noise is the concern. They don't care what the kids are actually doing, you know, if they're, you know, painting there. And there's more than, you know, I mean, who cares? It's, it's the noise.
I, I don't want to limit the number of kids. I want to limit the number. I, I don't want to limit the number of kids, I want to limit the number of adults.
Okay, so it doesn't sound like it's a friendly amendment, is what I'm hearing.
Is it friendly or is it not?
I didn't hear it was being friendly.
What was it?
To remove the limit on the kids.
On the people.
I think that makes sense.
Well.
I don't think that makes sense.
Yes, I mean, in principle, it's friendly, but I just worry about the, the effect and they agreed to accept the limit and the limit is based on their, I looked on their website what their current birthday party situation is and they, they don't go above 25 kids, I don't think. So 20 is.
You know what I mean.
I mean, it's friendly to me, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We call the question?
Do we need, we should see the language.
I think we're working on it.
It'll be here momentarily.
So we've been, staff has been taking notes for these conditions. So we have condition number six with some edits as we kind of heard from the commission. Number seven is directly what Chair Landris had put into the record. And also moving down to condition number eight, there's some revised language for the commission to consider. We're removing the last sentence in eight as well. We're not restricting to indoors only, we're doing a decibel limit.
Right.
And the decibel limit applies to the whole deal, indoor or outdoor. 65, it's noise ordinance at the alley line.
Wait, wait a minute. He always had the, he always had the decibel, that they had a, they had a person limit and then there was a friendly amendment to remove the person limit.
Right.
Yeah, I, I don't know. If, if, I, I get what you're saying about wanting to keep flexibility for outdoor events in the event, you know, God forbid COVID comes back, but, you know, people are going to be working from home then. I, I think that restricting outdoor events on weekends is still important. I don't, I don't feel comfortable getting rid of that.
No, I don't agree. We, I think we don't agree.
Well, and also, just to understand what the commission is looking to say as well, is this outdoor, if I understand Commissioner Landris, the outdoor limitation, which would, which would read, outside noise shall not exceed the decibel limit for noise zone one, which is 4.12.060, actually is not necessarily related to the special events, it's just a general restriction. So it would be, it could actually be added and we, I would recommend adding it as a separate condition so as not to confuse it being attached to any one particular aspect of the use. It's just the limitation. Is that fair?
Makes sense.
So just, just to clarify, my correct and understanding, your motion includes deleting the final sentence in condition eight?
We would permit outdoor use of the space on the weekends for special events, yes.
But the hours, too.
No, the hours, the hours would remain limited, but the, the use of outdoor space would be permitted.
You're permitting outdoor events on weekends?
Yes.
Okay.
We're limiting the decibels.
I, I can't support that, I'm sorry.
I'm going to be honest with you guys, it bothers me, too. I mean, the applicant said they didn't want to do outdoor stuff and we're, and the community's upset about the noise and here we are pushing outdoor stuff on them.
What about no amplified music?
It does, that's not.
I think they want to go inside and we should just let them do what they said they wanted to do.
Yeah, and if you're going to lose two votes over this, do you guys really want to lose two votes over this? I love, I mean, I think we got to do the, the childcare is important and there are some issues around the transportation issue with that, that is, those are concerns enough, I think we can get over. But why, I just don't know why we're, why we're pushing on this outdoor thing. They're not asking for it.
They're subsidizing the construction with the outdoor events.
No, they're not. No, they're not. They can do those inside and they said they're okay with doing them inside. And I, I hear you, Sean, that outdoor space is really important in, in projects and, and, but this is not critical, outdoor space is not critical to their business operation and it potentially has impacts on the community. And the community as first group, as first, whatever school, parents, we know that that, that creates an impact on them. So I would like to ask you guys to please take that out. I do not think that they were fighting for that by any stretch of the imagination.
All outdoor activities on the weekends?
No, on, on the weekends, just on the weekends.
So I would like to move that modification.
I second it.
Well, but there's a leak.
Let's do it as, let's vote on it. I mean, I'm prepared to lose the vote, but on principle, I'd like to vote on it.
Okay, then let's call the question.
No, no, let's, let's vote, let's vote on the amendment. I mean.
Commissioner, Commissioner Fonda Bonardi is proposing an amendment to restore the limit on outdoor use on special events in the weekend, so let's just vote on that.
Commissioner Fonda Bonardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Oh.
Commissioner Landris?
No.
Vice Chair Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulken?
Yes.
Chair Reese?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so now can we put that, we can, we voted on that, so we have taken out that permission and now we have a motion in front of us with everything else. Is there anything else that needs to be modified?
Just, special events on weekends shall be limited to indoor use during the hours of 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Yes.
Right? So just add the word indoor use. Between the hour, yeah. Between the hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. No, special events on the weekend shall be limited to, delete the, and add and instead Between the hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Right, and shall be prohibited at all other times. Your point. And shall be prohibited at all other times.
Sorry, just to not be a grammarian here, but originally this, it said, special events on weekends shall be limited, sorry, shall be restricted to indoor, indoors only, comma, between the hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM.
Now, should that thing go outside?
Yeah, this will be clearer. Special events on weekends shall be limited to indoor use between the hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM and shall be prohibited at all other times.
Okay.
Yeah. That's what you're saying. Special events only between 9:00 and 5:00 and only indoors.
Okay, so do we need to give, so one other question that I would have out there is, is, they're, we're asking for this plan approval, what I refer to as a plan approval in a year. And we're looking at traffic, but how do we distinguish between the first group's problems and our potential, and this potential problem? Do we give?
I think as alumni, you guys should go.
Say that again?
As alumni, you guys should go meet with them.
Great. Okay.
This is, so what we're showing on?
13.
On 13, that's.
18 months after the issue of the COO.
Will we stop the special events?
Well.
They're going to get an expansion.
They're going to expand. So we want the clock to start, we want the clock to start from, because they could lose time on construction, that's what we're. If it's easier, we could just extend the time. I don't know how long they plan to be in construction.
No, no, that's fine, it's just trying to add it.
And then I want to get back to kind of this question of, of the plan approval and how we discern. I mean, we think there's a potential traffic problem out there already existing and how do we discern what? Well, no, I mean, I don't, I can't mitigate that. I just, I guess what I'm saying is I don't want in a year them to look at this First School and say, look, look at the traffic, it's First School, and then these guys get dinged for it in our plan, our plan approval. And I'm just curious if we can give any.
My suggestion is that, and I've offered to do it, is that we see if we can get a front, front space for First School, for drop-off, because they don't have one now. That would help.
We can't require.
We can't make that official.
Of course not, but, you know, I tell you, folks.
Okay, well, we could agendize for our next meeting an item to recommend to the Mobility Division that it look at the loading zone allocation on seven, on Ocean Park between 17th and 18th. That's within our purview, we can take a vote at our next meeting.
We already know what it is.
I know, but we can't, it's not on our agenda, so we can't do it today, but we could do it at our next meeting.
That's what they're doing, yeah.
Alternatively, Commissioner, we could.
Hold on, hold on, staff is trying to respond.
If you would like, after you vote, you could give direction to staff.
Okay, great.
In terms of the concern being expressed on how, how this operator would be able to prepare a compliance report that demonstrates that the concerns raised to them are only related to their operations, that, you know, this, this is a condition and a potential requirement that can be imposed across, you know, all CUPs. I, I think that's something that will have to be, as requests or complaints come in and they will describe that, I would envision this compliance report would describe their operations, given an update on what, what has transpired around their operational plan that are, that's established through the CUP. I'm, staff is suggesting that on language they focus in that report on the complaints that they've received. It is true, there will be a potential difficulty in distinguishing, but in the absence of this, there would be no mechanism.
Okay. I think that as long as there's an acknowledgement, that there's an acknowledgement, you know, we're all today, we all today are sitting here and we all understand that there's an acknowledgement that there is an outside use here that we can't control. But in a year and a half, I just want to make sure that there's still that acknowledgement and I don't know if it's something we have to put into the wording here, but I just want to make sure that it doesn't get lost.
Would there be, and I'm still seeing that the conditional use permit type, like the timing is against the CUP rather than the COO on the expansion, so we need to fix that still, but would there be a way, Chair, I don't know if this solves your problem, but some sort of, I don't know if it's a rebuttable presumption or a preemptive rebuttal, that if the applicant, in responding to the complaints, documents that their PLOP meets the standards that were established, that that would be considered a sufficient, that we clarify that the applicant's compliance with the PLOP shall, shall be a substantive rebuttal, right? In other words, we're doing what you told us to do, if somebody else is behaving badly, it's not our fault.
That's where I want to get.
But could we say that?
Sure. Commissioner Fresco.
I think we're thinking too hard again and that the answer is that if a lot of complaints come in and it's really not clear, it will come to us and we'll ask them and we're a quasi-judicial board and we'll make a decision. And we don't have to like sweat it. And this doesn't mean your CUP would be revoked, we would just add different conditions. I mean, you know.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Vice Chair?
Yeah, so sorry, folks, just one last question on condition eight. I think we trailed off where it said permitted or prohibited at all other times at the end of the lesson. Could we say prohibited at all the times on weekends, just to make sure we're not getting ourselves into word trouble? Oh, it says that, okay.
Okay. Let's, let's.
Your brains are aligned. Lawyers.
Okay, folks, let's call the question. I, I see your hand, we don't call on people in this crowd right now. Let's call the question.
Yeah.
I think we've beaten this horse.
Since we've beaten.
Totally beaten it to death.
No, no.
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 Okay, so the motion is, as, as discussed and with the, with the changes that are provided on screen, Commissioner Fonda Bonardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes, there's a typo on the screen. Sorry. There is a typo on the screen. Item 13, the word in is, should be removed. Compliance report, 18 months. It's a Scrivener's error, it doesn't, shouldn't affect our vote, but I just want to flag it.
We will correct any typographical errors.
Thank you. My, my vote is yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner, Vice Chair Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulken?
Yes.
Chairperson Reese?
I'm, I'm a definite yes and I just, for the community, this is how laws get made. It's like sausage, it's not pretty, but we're, we're doing the best we can apparently. We hope that it works out for everybody and we put our best foot forward. This item is done, that CUP is approved with those conditions. We are going to move on in our agenda. I'm actually going to ask for a quick little break and then we'll come back to our agenda. Let's try to do it as fast as possible, please.
I'm going to tell everyone, I mean, I will.
Okay, can we call to order the meeting, please? Down one, Commissioner, but I believe she'll be here very shortly. And we do have a little bit of cleanup work on that last item. There was something that we wanted to recommend, and we did not do. So if we could go for a really quick motion on that and move.
A move we give staff direction insofar as we request that the Mobility Division review and expand the availability of loading zone, passenger loading zone parking on Ocean Park Boulevard between 17th and 18th on the north side, with an eye toward time of day loading zones in the early morning and in the late afternoon, mid and late afternoon.
Second.
Is that sufficient for your purposes? Thanks.
Call the question.
Can we do it on a voice vote?
Great. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, all those abstaining, the ayes have it. Okay. So where are we heading now? We're going to go to 11B, which is 315 Colorado Avenue, Santa Monica Place Development Agreement Termination.
I would like to move the question and pass on the report.
Okay, that's a, that's a motion. Do I have a second on waiving the staff report?
I actually have an issue that I want to flag.
Okay.
So would you mind holding your motion? It's a simple one.
Hold on. Are we waiving the staff report?
Yes.
We're waiving this, so we still have a motion to waive the staff report.
Was that your motion, to waive the, oh, okay, sorry, yeah. I second that.
Okay.
I thought you were just moving it.
And we're going to voice vote on that as well. So all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, all those abstaining, the ayes have it. Go ahead, Chair.
So my question, which I raised with the city attorney briefly before the meeting, and maybe we can just clarify this. Canceling, the language of canceling the development agreement, to me, feels a little bit extreme, particularly since we've had multiple agreements in the history, in city history, where they've been fulfilled, and so they're no longer applicable. But the notion of kind of like removing it strikes me as having broader policy implications that are not really before us. And so my question is, why are we proposing to cancel it? Is, wouldn't we sort of, wouldn't it be much cleaner to amend it by adding an expiration date of yesterday, which would allow the agreement to have existed and remain in force rather than be wiped from the slate? So that's, that was my, that was my question about the distinction. And if termination means we're putting an end date on it, and it's over and we're moving on, great. I just, there have been, coming off the Social Services Commission, where there have been multiple development agreements where the applicant fulfilled the agreement and went on with their lives, but it didn't mean that the agreement got, you know, vaporized. I just wanted to try to avoid setting a precedent of kind of vaporizing them.
So this particular request for termination or cancellation, just a little bit of context, the ordinance, which sets forth the rules for development agreements, does contemplate a cancellation of a development agreement. It is, you are correct, this is not something we do typically, or however, this development agreement is not typically drafted in the way that we would see a development agreement come forward for other kinds of new development. We evaluated this request from the applicant. They really posed us the question of, we would like to release the space to a use that does not comport with the actual permitted use in the development agreement, which is single purpose, this development agreement. That's why we are making the recommendation that this body and ultimately council enter into, and it would be done by ordinance. We, the ordinance, an ordinance would be required to cancel the development agreement. So there would be a memorializing of both the agreement and the reasons for the potential cancellation. This development agreement was only required because of the interim regulations that were in place with respect to height while the downtown community plan was in process. The height today, it was just an addition to the existing building. That height is permitted outright today. The movie theater use was never, you know, at issue at the time or the reason for the development agreement. All of the community benefits were either fulfilled through, and tied through the construction and the operation. In this particular instance, the development agreement is a barrier to the reuse that we'd like to allow them to move forward.
If I could just add on to that a bit, too, because, so as Roxanne is saying, this is a very unique development agreement because it didn't allow any additional square footage. So you might think of some DAs that allowed a project to be built, and, you know, once that DA would go away, that building would still exist.
Right.
This DA was really just to allow some additional height in existing square footage to accommodate the movie theaters. Movie theaters are gone. There's a new use coming in that won't have movie theaters. As Roxanne said, you know, they satisfied the, you know, payments that were required for the esplanade and for wayfinding. One of the DA requirements is that, you know, the theater seats be available for the film market. So obviously, if the theater goes away, there is no theater seats to provide. So that's why we did, you know, think that this was appropriate, a slightly different approach, to just terminate the DA, which then allows Mace Rich to move forward with the new lease they have for like a really exciting use that is really something that, you know, it'll only be like the second one in the country. So it's a very positive outcome, but that's the reason why we support the termination of the DA.
As long as it doesn't unwind, I mean, as long as it doesn't somehow precedentially unwind what was done. In other words, I get the argument that it's effectively null and void, right? That certain, certain, certain parts of the DA have been fulfilled.
Yeah.
And certain parts that are, relate to ongoing operations or ongoing limits, we want to declare null and void. I'm down with that. I just want to make sure that we're not kind of just completely, that it's over, not that it never happened. That's, that's the distinction I want to make.
There's still going to be a piece of paper out there that says this was a development agreement sometime, and there's going to be another piece of paper that says it was terminated. Right? I think. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just got a few quick follow-up questions on that. I had the same thought, you know, why not just amend this? And I get that, you know, this is a contract, and the contract was premised upon the idea there'd be a theater there. But there are some things that are ongoing requirements that I kind of like, like the requirement for this to be a LEED certified building, local hire requirements. I mean, is there any way in which we can shoehorn the new use into this?
Well, to start off with LEED, LEED was, LEED was related to the physical improvement that was done and completed.
That was built, yeah. And the box that was built for the movie theater is not changing. The new use is going into that space. So what they build will remain. The local hire piece of it, I think that really is tied to the DA.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's one thing that would not carry forward. Other things like the, you know, the transportation TDM, that that is based on the number of employees. So that would carry forward regardless. I mean, the applicant might want to talk about local hire, you know, if that's a practice of theirs in general, but that is something that wouldn't be, that wouldn't carry forward. Yeah.
Many other questions of staff? I'm not seeing any. I'm not sure if the applicant wants to speak, if there is an applicant, if they want to speak.
I'm here. I'm with Vice Chair Sam Monica, if you have any questions, I'm here, but if I have any to speak.
Okay. Well. My friend Sean would like to talk to you.
Thank you.
Quickly, hopefully.
Very quickly. If you could just say your name for the record.
I'm Julia Ladd, and I'm with Mace Rich, and actually formerly the manager of Santa Monica Place for 11 years.
Indeed.
And now the vice president of property management. So I still oversee and support Santa Monica Place and down here daily.
Thank you. What I really like to ask is what difference it will make for Mace Rich overall to have this, to have this cancellation beyond simply, if it will, let me rephrase the question. Will this cancellation provide any benefits to Mace Rich other than simply permitting that alternative use in the theater space?
Well, I think it will, as far as what, what we want to make sure is that we're able to maximize what the opportunity is with this new use. And so there, you know, it's only above and beyond what we had with ArcLight, and so it's not going to be limiting anything. It's going to open up just a better opportunity and not be restricted to things that were tied specifically to the theater use.
Okay. And as of now, you don't, your plan is Santa Monica Place is moving forward. I see that you've been creative in the use of the space. There have been some changes over time, but they're here. Mace Rich's intention is to continue to operate Santa Monica Place in the way that it's been operated for many years.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll move staff's recommendation.
We have a first and a second, like Fresco.
Commissioner Fonda Bonardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert.
Yes.
Commissioner Landris.
Yes.
Vice Chair Raskin.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien.
Yes.
Chairperson Reese.
Yes.
Yes, I vote on that. Okay, that item is wrapped up. That's 11B. Earlier, we moved 8B to the end of our agenda. I think this would be the appropriate time to bring up that discussion. This is a discussion on budget priority items. Staff, if you want to give a little presentation, and then we might have a little discussion.
Yeah, so I can start. So, you know, we're coming up on our biennial budget, so this will be the budget that we'll work under for the next two years, starting July 1st. You know, the city is in a pretty tight financial situation. I think everyone is aware of that. However, there are a couple of positions that we have put forward that are recommended in the council budget. So it doesn't mean necessarily that council will approve those positions, but I'll say it looks good. Like, at their retreat, they recommended that they be in the budget, and they're currently drafted that way. Again, it's ultimately up to what council decides in June, but, you know, so far, so good. So those two positions, one is in the City Planning Division. It's a senior planner position. And the main task that that senior planner would be expected to cover would be the getting our coastal plan adopted. So as you know, it's been a long time. We got pretty close a few years ago before COVID, but because of some differences with the Coastal Commission and COVID, frankly, we kind of ended up dropping that effort. So what we would expect the new senior planner to do is to take that on, to get our local plan adopted by the Coastal Commission, and then ultimately get an implementing ordinance, you know, before the council, so that we can actually take over the, you know, the coastal permit process. And that, that has a lot of benefits, obviously. So people are developers, applicants, homeowners, who are doing projects in the coastal zone would no longer have to go to the Coastal Commission, in most cases. In some cases, they still would. But it would just mean that coastal permit would be tied in with whatever other permit someone is doing. So it really helps in terms of permit processing, in terms of, you know, our timelines, you know, we, you know, you probably hear, we get a lot of complaints about how long it takes to do something in Santa Monica, and part of that is just that even after they get through our process, then they have to go to coastal. So that's, that's a really important function that we're hoping to add. But that will take a few years, but there's still benefits to having that position because we also see that as someone who could act as a liaison between the city and the Coastal Commission. So when applicants, you know, still are required to go to coastal, this is a person that will, you know, not, not take on the task for the applicant, but will definitely be the person that an applicant can call when they have questions about, you know, who do they talk to at coastal, you know, what's, what's the process. So that's really that one. There's other things that position will do, but that's really the main focus. And then the second position is within the department, and that's in the Economic Development Division, and it's a economic development administrator. That's a position that was cut when COVID happened. Jennifer Taylor, if you know her, she's our economic development manager. Prior to COVID, she was the economic development administrator. Her position was eliminated as administrator, and then she became the manager. But frankly, what's happened over the last three years is Jennifer's kind of been doing both jobs. So, you know, economic development, getting the city back to where we were pre-COVID, you know, working with building owners and tenants on the promenade to start filling those spaces, that's all like really, really important to get more money flowing into the city, which then allows us to fill even more positions as we go forward and do other really important things. So those are the two positions that are kind of teed up. So, you know, we would love the commission's support on those, if you agree that those are important. And then also, if there's other things the commission wants to recommend to the council, as you've done in the past, that's up to you and before you.
Commissioners, we have one shit, so let's hear from the public before we go into discussion, if that's all right? Carol Lemley.
Thank you. Carol Lemley, speaking on behalf of the Santa Monica Conservancy, and this is essentially the same statement that we made at the council budget workshop in last month. When COVID- Um, when COVID shut down economic activity in Santa Monica, the city faced very difficult choices and we recognize that. The historic preservation program was significantly impacted. The commission's meetings were cut back to every other month at most, as we're finding. Preliminary review of developed demolition permits was removed from the commission's responsibilities entirely. Staff was reduced, canceling plans to hire a dedicated preservation planner. Fees for designation applications were increased to recover all city costs at $6,000 or more. These were the highest in the state. Application fee waivers for nonprofits had been eliminated. Fee waivers for, uh, planning and building safety applications for owners of designated properties were eliminated, removing important incentives for property owners already fearful of the impact of designation on operating, on updating and renovating their properties. That left the Mills Act property tax contracts as virtually the only benefit of designation. There have been several unintended consequences as well. Social justice concerns have become increasingly important over the, uh, COVID period and we're already doing so. Preservation organizations from the national trust to local municipalities nationwide, had determined to broaden their efforts to tell all the stories of their communities through their historic preservation programs. Santa Monica's had done the opposite. The increased costs in the program have made it inaccessible to potential applicants interested in honoring places of value to blacks, Latinx, indigenous people and other overlooked groups. Out of reach for everyone but wealthy individuals and commercial enterprises. The elimination of preliminary review of demolition permits has made it more difficult to identify properties with cultural value that reflect marginalized communities as there is no public process for this review. Finally, a robust preservation program focused on a broad view of our heritage can create jobs and business opportunities. A recent publication from the National Trust Advisory Council on Preservation states, "A high percentage of domestic and international..."
It's a moment. You've lost your mic, so nobody can hear you outside of us. So let me ask, let me get your mic turned back on and give you another 30 seconds to finish up.
Thank you. Those that do, um, stay longer, spend more and travel more often, uh, which obviously would be of great benefit to the city. We have diminished the historic preservation program when we should be engaging in our shared desire to build a more just and inclusive community. It's time to restore the fee waivers, reduce application fees and restore the preservation planning position to makes, help make staff more effective. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Not seeing any question. Oh, wait, no.
I have a question.
Yes.
Carol, uh, do you remember what the fee used to be before it was raised to, uh, 6,000?
Well, the, the fee itself has been creeping up over time. Right now, the actual application fee is about $1,200. But what has happened is adding the consultant's fee so that the applicant is paying for the city's study of the property.
That's in effect a fee raise.
$6,000 or more.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert.
Um, Carol, I know at one point, I remember, I think when I was on the commission, um, the nonprofits did not pay a fee for submitting an application for designation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
When was that reversed? Oh, you don't have to.
I think it was, I think it was, that one might have been a bit before COVID.
It was before COVID. I just can't remember. And the rationale was budgetary, right?
The rash, no, the, there was a concern. I, I think it was, it was connected to our concerns about the Woody's decision, you know, that.
Why would that have an impact? Well, that's just a.
Maybe not, but at, at any rate, the conservancy has twice submitted legal opinions from very well-known land use attorneys regarding the various interpretations of the Woody's decision that have impacted the program.
That should have nothing to do with nonprofit applications.
We have had no results of those discussions.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comment is over. It's in front of the commission for discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Landris.
Uh, I have a quick, I have a quick question. I mean, it's actually related, um, to Carol's point about economic development. My work on the economic recovery task force, um, has focused quite a bit on philanthropic, um, resource development. And with respect to economic development, that's obviously an avenue of, um, of interest for the city. And we've got amazing staff, but I don't, I'm not seeing the, a real, a real development of that core capacity. So I'm wondering, A, whether this economic development, like the expansion of the economic development administrator position alongside the manager position, would in fact strengthen that capacity and that muscle? And B, to what extent we could actually kind of, I'd be interested in advocating for that being part of the job description because I think we need to be competitive. Planning department is already so great at going out for all the grants that we can get from everybody. Um, we want to make sure that that's happening on the econ development side from both private and public sources.
Yeah, yeah. I totally agree. And that would be an appropriate, um, statement for the commission to make or recommendation. I guess what I would say is that, you know, both of the positions are really focused on, you know, getting us back in terms of economic recovery, you know, making it easier or faster, hopefully, for projects to get through the process by eliminating the coastal review and then having that extra, um, extra person in economic development that can do the kind of things you're talking about. So.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks.
Commissioner Fresco.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Lemline for her presentation and, um, you may have noticed we got a bunch of letters from landmarks commissioners who haven't met since February and, uh, have had very few things to review largely because of these very high fees. And, uh, based on personal experience, I can tell you that all of our incentives have been removed and all of the efficiency that we used to be able to provide because we had so much staff before is gone. And so all we really have left is the law and that is not enough. I mean, we promote the idea that historic preservation is a benefit. It's beneficial to the public. It can be beneficial to an owner and we're having a really hard time making that argument right now because it is a mess. It's just, there are just not enough people to do it. And I really feel like this complete, I, I, not to be dramatic, but I really feel like our preservation program is in a state of collapse right now. And it's a canary in the coal mine in that this city, I mean, we have so many other deadlines, really important legal deadlines with the housing element and SB 330 and all this stuff. And this is the first thing to fall down. And I think we need to pay attention to that. And if we can get this off the plate of all those other people who are trained in all those other ways, that will help all of that work. A preservation planner could then do this work and revise this program. It's not like a library where you can lock the door and everyone's bummed, but the books will stay there. With landmarks, they get torn down and when they're gone, they're gone and that's it. It's over. So I think this is really important. A preservation planner, if we hire somebody who's trained not only in city planning, but also in historic preservation, they can, uh, do, they can actually review applications. We don't need to hire a consultant. So that takes that burden of, uh, that incredibly high consultant fee. I mean, we had one application where it was estimated at $6,000 just for the fee and it, for the consultant. And, uh, we ended up having to withdraw that application. I mean, you know, it's just really out of control. Preservation planner could also raise money, you know, get grants and stuff to help support that work. And even their position, you know, there's, it's just, I, we can't wait, you know? We've been laying low because we had a preservation planner almost on the books and we were interviewing and we were almost there and it was almost a great day. And, uh, and then the budget cuts happened and that, of course, was, and we were going to wait until things stabilized, but now we can't wait because it's, we can't landmark. We can't say to an owner, this is going to help you. This is good for you. You get these benefits. Cause there are no benefits. There are just costs and it's over. So we need to, I implore you to add this recommendation to our list. And, uh, maybe the landmarks commission will be able to, uh, meet before and make their own recommendations, but I, you know, I mean, they don't seem to know if they will and I sure don't know. So, you know, we just need to do that. So that's my impassioned plea.
Well, I will second everything that Commissioner Fresco said and has said it much better than I could, but I would like to add two parts to it. One is that, you know, if we are heading into a recession and God willing, we don't get there, but, um, one of the things that resources spent on preservation of older buildings do is they employ a lot of people. It's a very labor intensive activity and that's one of the reasons it's so costly. So having an active, uh, program of preservation where people are actually preserving, restoring, rehabbing buildings is, is a good investment for a city. It's part of the economic process that we're trying to do. The other thing that we've already referred to is that people love preservation. They love to go to places like Charleston that actively does it because they feel that's authentic and there's nothing more authentic than buildings that have seen the test of time. And then the last thing I would like to add is that not only has our preservation program collapsed, but our, unfortunately, our whole building department is completely overloaded. Uh, and they need help. They need people on the ground answering phones, plan checking plans, accepting permit fees, all that stuff. It, it, it is, it is a horrible situation right now. Uh, and they're struggling and they need help. So I would recommend that we, as a planning commissioner, ask for two positions in addition to the two that are already on track. Uh, and that's the, uh, preservation planner and then a plan checker. I don't know the exact place that the work overload in the billing department is, but the whole, the whole process of the billing department is totally gummed up and it's not working. So the place that has the most leverage, I don't care where that person is placed, but we need at least one more person there.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Lambert, you're up.
You sure? Is there someone else you'd like to call on?
Commissioner Tolkien, would you like, vice chair?
I'll, I'll defer to that.
Sean.
Sean, yeah. Um, I just want to second everything those guys said. Um, I mean, I was on the landmarks commission for, oh.
For three years. And then when I was there, it was a very robust program and it is not now. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, this city does not have a historic preservation program. And it's called for the loose and it's called for, and it has historic preservation element and we're not abiding by it. So I would like to see this commission support addition of a preservation officer to the staff and also, um, basically waiver of fees for nonprofit applications for designations. Cause they're absolutely correct that the, the fee situation is out of control. I mean, unless you're like, you know, a huge property owner, you just can't do it. And I think we should go back to what we used to have, which was a nonprofit waiver for applications. So I would like to see the commission act on that.
I just have one more comment, if I may.
All right, Ed.
If we get a preservation planner and we get the thing, the program back up and running and under control, I'll retire and you won't have to hear me anymore.
Second? No, I'm sorry. I was only joking. I was only a joke. I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
So on that basis, I oppose the appointment of a preservation planner because I don't want to lose Nina. But, uh, um, no, I think, I just want to speak reality for a minute, which is we need to be on record on principle, supporting this position. It was promised to us pre-COVID. COVID changed everything. I want to acknowledge that. But this is now a biennial, this is a biennial budget here, right? Okay. In the spirit of reality, um, I think we ought to advocate fully for the positions, both that staff has described and that we've been asked to advocate for. I also think we need to add the fallback position, which is in the absence of those positions, we really respectfully, but clearly are asking for a timeline and a plan to create those positions as they were promised pre-COVID and would be coming back. It is not unheard of for budgets to include plans for future staff restoration and, um, funds permitting. I think we need to prioritize the fee waivers from homeowner, both for homeowners, for Mills Act applications and for, uh, or for property owners, not just homeowners. Right. Designation applications and the nonprofit fee waivers, because we got to get that moving again. But I, I would like to communicate somehow, whether it's through this letter or through some other process, that we, we'd like to see the position now, but if we're not going to see the position now, we'd like to see the plan for putting the position in place so that we have, so that there's some more certainty in the community.
I, I would also like somebody to look at, talk about the feasibility of bringing a contract employee on for historic preservation in the meantime, if that's feasible. Uh, cause it's cheaper. Union may, you know, may not like it, but, but I really think that should be pursued because it's a less expensive option if we can't get the full position.
Actually, the position did not exist pre-COVID, which would mean that the city, under its agreements, could actually do that. Had the position existed pre-COVID, we would have been obligated to recreate the position. But since the position was never actually filled, we can hire contract employee.
I think we should do that. I'd put that in our recommendation.
Okay. So I see, well, do we have other discussion on this side of the guys? Go ahead.
Yeah, but you're ready to go. I can go after you.
No, I, I was just trying to summarize what I've heard, what I've heard here. So.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, it's not the point of the contract planner. I, I wouldn't, I, I support that. I wouldn't want that to be permanent fix though. Yeah. Yeah. Um, yeah, I agree wholeheartedly with what has been said. I mean, I think, uh, you know, the letters from our landmarks commissioners speak for themselves. And, um, you know, I think we should not only listen to them and their expertise, but recognize, uh, all the points that were made, uh, here tonight. Let me ask just a logistical question. So I presume that these fees are in a, the landmarks fees are in a fee schedule. And is that being updated as part of the biennial budget process?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, yeah, I agree with all those recommendations about that. I also agree with the recommendations about, uh, plan check. Uh, that's, I mean, we all understand the difficulties there. The other thing I've been hearing is, is with respect to code enforcement. And, uh, I know that's been a ongoing conversation for decades, frankly. I think, I, I'm not sure how we're going to bake this into the budget, but what I've been hearing from folks is that there's a disconnect between making code enforcement reports and then that being acted upon. I'm not quite sure if that part of the budget is something that we're going to be commenting on tonight. But to the extent that there's a way to, uh, you know, get some sort of outcome that would, you know, improve that, uh, through a budget recommendation, let us know.
Okay. Yeah. Code enforcement is actually one of the divisions that, um, positions have been fully restored from pre-COVID. Frankly, the, the challenge in code.
been fully restored from pre-COVID. Frankly, the challenge in code enforcement is filling those positions. You know, we go out, we recruit, we get, you know, handful of applicants. We are able to hire some of them. And then we hire a few, but then someone else leaves to go to another city. So it's a, it's a constant churn. So that's really the main issue in code enforcement, is just keeping the staff that we have and being able to fill the positions that we have. We do have a new code manager who's been with us about six months, who, you know, is doing a good job in looking at some of those issues you described. So I see things getting a lot better in code enforcement. But yeah, if there's something the commission wants to recommend in that light, you know, you're certainly welcome to.
I'll wrap it up there. But again, seconding everything that's been said.
Okay. So I would say, what I've heard consensus on is the senior planner for the LCP, Economic Development Administrator, an LA DBS, I'm sorry, not LA DBS, a Department of Building and Safety, sorry, floater. And then on historic preservation, not only a planner and potentially a contract planner, but fee breaks for nonprofits and for the Mills Act.
Mills Act?
I didn't mean the Mills Act. I just said for the homeowner, for the, for the homeowners, for just fee breaks for the homeowners and for nonprofit.
Designation requests by proprietors.
Wordsmith it all week. That's what I mean. So then there was this issue with code enforcement. And quite frankly, every time I've been involved with a budget request to the city, we've always asked for more code enforcement. So that's not unusual. But maybe in this case, just, we got to pick our battles. And we already have four, four in front of us that are going to be tough enough. So want to hear comments on that and then have a motion and move forward with it.
And Doris, I just want to add that the public and private philanthropic resource development on the economic development, just make a specific reference to that, just to public and private philanthropic resource development as a component of the position.
Can you just, as I'm going to want to write this, would you just give me a little more definition of what you mean by that?
Well, the idea is that, the idea is that grant writing, grant seeking and grant writing is something that, I mean, during COVID, we've had, since COVID, we've lost some staff who had the skill of doing that. We have some who can do it, but it's kind of ancillary to their job. And I think having that capacity be part of the job description for this particular restoration would be very helpful, so that it is understood as part of their job. And it's not necessarily going to be the thing they do all day, all day long, but it's not going to be seen as something they're doing as a sideline. And that's, I think, important.
I appreciate that. Now, tell me again the title you had for it.
I just said public and private philanthropic resource development.
Okay.
Yeah. And what about Commissioner Lambert's suggestion for a contract employee on preservation planning in the absence of a?
I did mention, I did mention that, or I meant to mention that if I did not.
Okay. So the position or a plan to fill it? Yeah.
Interim contract.
Interim, interim, time limited. Temporary. Okay, commission, anybody want to, vice chair?
Yeah, I realize this isn't within the purview of the planning department budget per se, but one thing we've talked about with some frequency recently is with respect to accessibility at these meetings. And I'm curious if.
Yes, please.
Of the budget discussion is going to involve conversation about, you know, making sure that we can have the funds available to make these meetings accessible and have hybrid meetings.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what was the topic you were talking about.
Well, just about, you know, having hybrid meetings where people can video in and join the meetings.
That is definitely being looked at, I can assure you, yeah. So we've been asked each department to estimate like what costs we would have to incur to run hybrid meetings, and that will be part of the budget discussion, yeah.
But specifically, if I may, we should, you're right, thank you, it's late, we should renew our call for remote public comment, at the very least, a formal, official remote public comment option that is accessible to everyone and does not require claiming a disability in order to be able to take advantage of it.
Kevin Kudus?
No, we can't. 2449 limits that. But, yeah. And I would be clear that telephonic is sufficient on the road to video. We don't need to have full interactive video to be able to take phone calls.
Okay. Are we, anybody opposed to adding in the hybrid meeting discussion in this? Okay. I got hybrid meetings, LCP, economic development, public-private philanthropic resource, historic preservation, fee breaks for nonprofits, homeowners. We have a historic planner. If not a planner, give us a schedule and give us an interim contract planner in the meantime, and we want that DBS floater. Right? Right?
Yes.
I just wanted to add that Linda Dishman will be free after November 30th. We're looking for a contract employee.
I would, I would.
I'll put Linda, control.
Remote public comment is clearer than hybrid meeting.
I'm seconding that to move this thing forward.
Are you moving that, that list? I'll second your, I'll second the laundry list.
We're, we're moving forward.
Great. Can we do it on a voice vote?
Yes.
Cool.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? When is the, when does my letter have to be done?
Tomorrow at 8:00 AM?
Yeah, that's probably not going to happen, but.
The budget hearing is on May 23rd.
I move, I move that our chair represent us.
Whoa, 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 whoa. It'd say like, May 15th around, yeah.
That's when the hearing is, maybe?
No, it's May 23rd. So we'd, assuming you wanted to get in the council packet, I'd get it to us the, like, the Monday before the council meeting.
That's the 15th.
Prior, the week prior.
When's the council meeting? Did you just say?
The 23rd of May.
I trust our chair and vice chair to represent us well.
Okay. All right, folks, I won't let you down. Too bad. So with that, I believe we are at the end of our agenda, but let me just double check here. We've gone to 12, we get to 12 resolutions, no written comments, planning commission discussion items, which that's going to come back to us soon. With that, we're adjourned at?
Chair, if I may, just one quick point. I think at some point earlier this year, we adjourned in memory of Marissa Rubin, and Jerry just wanted me to announce for the public that there will be a planting of a tree of gratitude in honor of Marissa this Saturday, April 22nd, at 12:00 noon at Palisades Park, and the public is invited.
And it's my mom's yard site, too. 16 years.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much for that. Good night, everybody.